Stream live just for logistics. I'm also, uh, what else am I doing? I'm going to begin recording. Everybody knows I am starting to stream live this for logistics and also. Turn that off. Okay. Okay, so we're live on YouTube and that's so we can take the feed to channel 26. The second thing I'm going to do is, is I'm going to record the Zoom. This is a backup, which was paused. We are, all right, we are live. I am going to disappear. I'll be, I'll be online. If anyone that's joining needs, has an emergency, Ryan's online, I'll be online, but passively online. I'm monitoring everything. So if, if you hit the panic button, use the word Ryan and he can help out.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
Sorry. So if my system crashes again, what would you like me to do?
Instead of just ask for assistance from Ryan.
How? Through the participants? Which, which vehicle?
Um, go ahead and send me a text.
So, so I was just gonna say I won't, if the machine, if it shuts down.
Yeah.
Have a way of reaching you. So what would you like me to do?
Go ahead and send me a text message. I'll pour that text message to Ryan, just so we know.
Okay, so what's your number?
It's gonna be 408. Should I be saying this while we're broadcasting?
Probably not. You can send me a text.
All right, I'll do that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, is Cecil still on?
Uh, I am, yes.
I just wanted to, um, ask that you have your view on, um, the, the speaker view?
Okay, got it. So speak here. Okay, perfect, okay.
And, and then I wanted to let everybody else know that there will be a slight delay on the video. If people are looking at the streaming, there is a little bit of a delay from the sound in the video because we are feeding from YouTube. And that's it.
Hi all. Can, can you guys hear my fan? No. Hi, everybody. We've got competing water towers going here.
I noticed.
It's weird how my hair. Hey, Red. Hey, Paul.
Hi there.
Andrea, you're gonna let me know when to start?
Yes, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we're ready to start.
Thank you. I call to order the special meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. The special city council meeting is conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-2920 issued by the governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on channel 26, the city's website and YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend meetings at the city hall council chambers physically. However, those wishing to participate are asked to register in advance using the link located on the agenda. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing the information about joining the meetings. Speakers may be allocated up to two minutes for public comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Here.
Councilmember Bybee?
We can't hear you, Anne.
Here.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Mayor Landry?
Present. Thank you. At this point, we have on the agenda oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any manner that is not on the agenda. Those members of the public wishing to participate are asked to register in advance. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about joining the meetings. Speakers may be allocated up to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the city council from discussing or taking any such actions. However, the city council may instruct staff accordingly, record, recording, I'm sorry, regarding oral requests. Has the deputy city clerk received any comments on this item? Not on the agenda?
So we did receive a registration from a Ryan Rajabi who selected oral requests. I just wanted to confirm if he is online, that that was for this meeting and not the regular meeting. There are Ryan Rajabi. I don't.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't see him in the attendees. So I'm gonna say no for oral requests.
Okay, thank you. Now is our public hearing and introduction of ordinances. Please note that members of the public may be allocated up to two minutes to comment on any public hearing item. When applicable, applicants or appellants and their representatives may be allowed additional time depending if they are appellant on opening statements, up to five minutes and three minutes for maximum for closing statements. Items requested or recommended for continuance are subject to council's consent at the meeting. So today's agenda is item number one, an introduction of the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget. And our presenter is our finance director, Will Fuentes.
And actually, Madam Mayor, if I can, let me do a brief introduction and then I'll turn it over to Will if that's appropriate.
Yep.
Hey, Will, you wanna queue up the PowerPoint?
Um, I will, um, on the Heitzel, um, can, um, can, can you give, give me the okay to share the screen?
Okay. Why they do that? Let me go ahead and give the introduction. That may take a few minutes here to share.
I'm there, just right now. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Ryan and, and Will. So as a mayor, this is a continuation of the introduction of the fiscal year 2020, 21 operating and capital improvement budget. As the council is aware, we did meet on June 9th and we spoke at some length on the, the operating budget, but what we missed was the, the talking in detail about the CIP project, which is our capital improvement plan, and a quick highlight of potential revenue measures. And we hope to achieve that tonight. I'm just gonna introduce this really briefly and then I'm gonna turn it over to Will Fuentes, our finance director, who's gonna walk us through a detailed CIP budget and hopefully address rather quickly some of the questions and concerns we've got to date. It's our intent to try to provide as much time as possible during this hour for council questions and comments. So we will rush through this rather expediently based on what we've heard from you already and questions you've ever got. And we'll try to those first foremost while still giving you a highlight of the capital improvement budget. What we're doing as a follow-up to June 9th is we're gonna be incorporating those comments. It's referred to on this slide as scenario three or tier one into the final version that's coming to you. I'm not gonna read the bullets under there, but those are the actions that we're taking between now and June 25th. And you'll see those items in the revised budget document. I wanted to provide a brief clarifying comment with regard to the operating budget. Since we talked about that, we received several questions regarding the, the budget and the, and the base salary cost or the employment costs that's being shown. Looking at the budget comparing to last year, when you look at the personnel costs, it was typically shown under exhibit B. It appears that the personnel costs have almost doubled. But what we're doing is we're trying to be more transparent and show in one place the entire personnel cost related to personnel. So where previously personnel cost was base salary shown on one exhibit, the benefits were captured in aggregate form by program area and shown in a different area of the budget. We're now combining those so you can see the total financial impact of every position with benefits find in one place. And hopefully that is easier for the public to see. I know delve back into the operating budget this evening per se, but I did want to provide that clarification, both the council and the members of the public as they look at the operating budget going forward and assure you that those costs are not being increased. We're simply reflecting the combination of those two expenses, the base salary and the benefits in one area. I'm gonna turn it over to Will to walk us through the CIP.
Can I ask a question first, please? Brian?
Sure.
Can you go back one slide? Okay, so the third bullet, staff is incorporating scenario through tier one. And it says freeze all vacant positions except those which have been identified as critical. I wanna make sure this isn't regarding the building official and the maintenance supervisor. I don't know if it's called building maintenance.
Those, those were two of them that were identified as critical and the other ones that were identified as critical are PD-related.
Okay. And then, um, did we talk at all about, and I don't see it listed there as one of your bullets, about the potentially bridging the gap in the budget with potentially looking at labor costs? Is that now in the bullets there or is that to be discussed later?
No, as, as you allude to, we are in the process of meet and confer with the labor groups. And we are talking about those issues and those, those numbers as a result of those discussions have not been plugged into the operating budget. But the deficit that we're showing in the budget will be reduced by those negotiations by whatever amount is agreed to. We will be scheduling an executive session with the council. Once we've completed those negotiations to report back to you on what, what, what that result was and, and get additional direction from the council if, if the council chooses to do so.
And that will be before the June 25th final budget meeting?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Brian, can I speak to the building official issue?
Yes.
So at the last meeting, I presented that I have an acting building official. So the city does have a building official. He is our senior inspector and he has all the certifications necessary to be a building official. So I'm questioning why the city council wants me to move to yet hire another building official when I already have one.
So let me ask you if by him, Bill, being the acting building official, do you then need an inspector?
We have three building inspectors, one senior, and then the building official position became vacated. So I moved the senior inspector as our acting building official. He's capable. He has all the education necessary to fulfill it. He is a certified building official. We're, so in terms of kind of overriding the staffing that I see is appropriate for the building department, especially post-COVID, I think we're pretty well staffed in, in that level, but you know, yeah, so I, I think we're pretty good at the building official level right now. If the economy improves in the future, we could always then, you know, move to hiring a permanent and then, you know, transition the senior back to the original position.
Okay, and then because he's coming out of.
Mayor Landry?
Yeah? I'm not sure who said that.
Vice Mayor.
Liz?
I, I didn't speak. I do wish to speak, but I didn't.
It's Susan, it's Anne Bybee.
Oh, okay. I can't see all the pictures. So go ahead.
I just wanted to add on to that because I was the one that brought that up in the, my discussion about freezing positions. And I indicated that I would support having a person in an acting building official between July 1 and December 31st and that we hold off on a recruitment for the, for the permanent position until we have a better sense of where this COVID is taking us as far as budget. So that's, that was my comment was that we, we back, we utilize an existing person in an acting capacity as building official.
Okay.
On a recruitment.
Okay.
If I may. Vice Mayor Gibbons, I understand and agree with what councilmember Bybee said. I think the confusion may be earlier on in the discussions, council was concerned that the proper budget amounts be identified and that the position of chief building official needs to be identified as an interim or whatever. And the salary rate that is associated with that position is incorporated into the budget. The concern was that we would budget at too low a salary level. So it was just, it happens in several departments. If the person is stepping up into a higher role, then you want to make sure that the budget reflects the appropriate funding for the, the interim responsibility. That, that is, I think, what the conversation intended. And we're all fine that the position needs to be filled and then how you choose to fill it is, is your choice.
Is up to Paul. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we went over that slide pretty quickly. So.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Paul. So I guess we're to Will now.
All right, so I will continue to share, I will continue to share, to share the screen. So just give me one, one, I can on that, please? All right, um, and again, I'm, I get, uh, hot evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, I attempt to, I'm, I'm attempt to go through the, the, the CIP, the CIP items quickly so that the council and, the council and the public are able to, are able to, I thought, any questions and, uh, comments. Um, they, the council, uh, today, um, was, was said a task item in, in regards to the CIP. It, I, I identified, it, I identified and gave a current update on some CIP care, care reover projects. And, um, I identified some of the CIP care reover products that are currently funded by the CIPR that could be returned to the general fund. In a total, we feel that about 808, 850,000 could be returned in a CIP, CIP are a carryover products and be returned to the general fund. And so the amount some that can be returned will also help to, will also help to offset any, any draws that we need to make upon a general fund reserve accounts in, in either the current, uh, year, fiscal year 2020. Or also if, if there are any potential draws upon a general fund reserves in fiscal year 2021. Although we are again attempting to bring the deficit down and to ensure that the draw upon a reserve, upon general fund reserve accounts in fiscal year 2021 is as low, is as, is as low as it can be. Um, coming on, um, to, to, to repeat, um, what we, what we shared on June that night. Um, we show us, we, we showed, we showed 63, 63 projects under the CIP. There are, there are a number of new products. Also, two currently approved products. There are also those, some of products which are currently approved but don't need additional budget. And there are also the care, the care reover products detailed and discussed in the task item. And, and, and also in the slide prior. So the, the total, the, the total CIP amount is, is currently, is currently 83.3 million in a total. But the, we, we will also, we will also, we will also include in the next published, the, the next published proposed CIP, a ESCO, an ESCO product as well that was approved by a council in the past, but that's not shown in the current, the current proposed CIP book. We also, we also took the CIP to the, to the, to the planning commission as well. And they confirmed that it complied with both the general plan and also a CIP as well. Um, I, I want to go through each of the, a new, each of the new products in detail. But we, we, we are, we are here to address any questions on the new products that either come from the council or also from the public as well. Towards the end of, towards the end of the list, you'll also, you'll also see the, in the inclusion of the ESCO project as well. And it will again be put into the next published, the next published proposed CIP book. We again show a two, two CIP, two CIP products which, which needs additional funds. And the details of each of a project are also in the proposed CIP book. And then again, there are a number of current CIP products that we show, but they don't need additional funds at, at this. Um, so it, it gives a quick, a quick, a quick overview of the CIP. Of the CIP. And we, we will again address any. A council or any public questions in, in regards to. Any specific CIP products or also. Anything, anything that was discussed on June the ninth as well. I'm, 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 I'm putting up on the. Screen. Just a, a couple of potential, a couple, a couple potential ideas. For a council to, to also consider. Also consider. Also consider. In, in attention to, to reductions. Reductions to a cost. We could attempt to put them onto a ballot in the fall. But time is. A short. But I mean, it's also, it is also, it's also open to a discussion. Also it's open to discussion as well. The, the. Is the one, is the one, is the one, is the one item that. I think would, would hold the most potential. But it, it could be again. A difficult to put onto, to put onto the ballot in the fall. Just, just due to timing. And then in regards to the up, the upcoming dates and next steps. We will, we will help again take the, the input and the council's. Comments from both June the ninth and also tonight. And they will go into the next up, the next, the next, the next version. Of the proposed budget and, and CIP to be. Heard for adoption on June the twenty-fifth. We'll also. Also a return to a council and a give update each a month. And, and the budget could be. Could be adjusted either up or. A down dependent either on the, the timing of the meeting. But, but also the state of, the state of the economy at the time as well. So at, at, at this point, I will. Take and address any questions.
Thank you. Can you, yeah, there we go. So at this point, it's if anybody on the council has questions. And then after that, we'll have public comment. Shall we start with Rich? Do you have any questions? Anne, any questions? Paul?
It's comments that I guess we can hold.
We have comments after public comment. Liz, questions?
So. I. It's hard to ask the questions, but I'll try. So under the Measure O funding. It shows the total budget of fifty million dollars and we have, there's a series of tables in here. All kind of showing the same information in different ways. And my two questions related to Measure O is we've already collected, are in the process in 2020 of collecting a million dollars. So I'm unclear that we would actually go out for bond for fifty million. Would we go out for bond for forty-nine million? And I'm not sure how that's playing out. I don't see anything that clarifies how we're covering the current contracts the council approved. A month ago. And there's existing money that's been used from other accounts. And I'm not clear on how that money is being repaid to those various accounts. So just have general questions about that. The other question. Have money in the Parkland. I'm trying to think of this as a question. I'll try. We have money in the Parkland Fund of about three to five million, depending on what you see. Is there any reason why that money should or shouldn't be used sooner rather than later?
Who, who's that? Brian?
Will, do you want me to take a crack at the first question?
Um, sure.
Or you want, you want to?
You can, and I'll, I'll also, I'll also give any extra.
Okay, so Vice Mayor Gibbons, you are correct. We, last year, the council authorized a property tax assessment. That we estimated would generate about a million dollars. The property tax assessment is really there to, is for, is for debt service towards the.
Yeah, I'm fine with all that.
And to help us with existing expenses. So those expenses. That you're speaking of with the professional services are being paid for out of that fund right now?
Not sufficient.
It, it isn't. That fund will run negative. And so when those bonds are sold, the revenues from those bonds will refund. That fund that those monies being spent out of. So right now, in essence, that fund's running negative until we sell bonds to reimburse that. We do have a million that's being used to that. And, and I don't know what that exact balance is off the top of my head. Will can probably provide those numbers. But I anticipate that, just because we're collecting property tax, we would still go for the fifty million dollar bonds. The property tax is the money in the security to pay off those bonds and those expenses over time.
Okay, so, so forgive me. That doesn't make sense to me. So I would appreciate just checking. I don't understand how we can go for bonds when we've already collected some of the money.
That money that we've collected is going to be paying off the bonds. We've started collecting money before we sold the bonds. But soon as we sell bonds, we're going to have debt service. That money you're collecting in property tax is the security for those debt services.
I'm sorry, I'm apparently not asking my question clearly enough. But, okay. I'll, I'll ask it again when we meet tomorrow.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I have.
Will, do you want to address the second question about the Parkland Funds?
He's got a second question, which is the question, which is, is there any reason that we shouldn't use the Parkland money sooner rather than later?
So, I mean, I think, I think that is one, one for. But the, the, the Park, the Park, the Park. Fund, it, it can, it can only be, it can only be.
Yes, yes, I'm aware of that. Thank you.
But I will, I will give, I will give the question to Todd.
Thank you, Will. So, so Vice Mayor, the, the, the short answer to your question is no, there's no reason to wait or not wait. It's just, it, it just so happens that as we parcel the projects out over the five-year time horizon. We actually are a little light in projects, you'll notice in year four. So it might behoove us at some point to either identify an additional park project to add. Or this might be an opportunity for us to, to. To go searching for a park site in one of our more park deficient areas of the city. But at this point, there's no plan to use, to use that money. But we could certainly use with, with putting a strategy together to make us a little less park deficient.
So I think that's a very good point. You broke up a little bit, but I think I heard the gist of it. I think that whether the money should be set aside to help with park deficiency. Or to continue improving the parks that we have. And the reason I'm asking the question is we have on hold the Campbell Park. I believe we asked the question, that Campbell Park was being funded totally from park funds. And we've put it on hold. And that funding would cover staff time as well.
Actually, yes, the Campbell Park Project is, was put on hold. Essentially so we could let the JDM project move ahead of it because of time constraints related to the grant. But the Campbell Park Project is coming back to council. And, and you will, it's actually funded already. You'll see it in the, in the cash flow. I believe the construction is funded for year fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And so we will bring you hopefully a close to final conceptual design in September. And if we need to make adjustments to that funding level, we can discuss at that time. But we are continuing to move forward with, with the Campbell Park Project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I thought I misunderstood from earlier meetings then that that project was put on hold. And I was trying to understand why. So thank you, I appreciate. Okay, I'm still asking questions. My notes. So there's a couple, and I know we got it material this afternoon and I did my notes on the older material. I haven't had a chance to review the new material. So if you've answered it, I'll apologize. The Eden Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project has a carryover of a hundred and fifty-six thousand. Is that, is that almost finished?
That project actually is finished and, and these carryover amounts. In many cases reflect what the balance was last June thirtieth.
Last June, last June.
Yeah, so we still have to, so this is carryover from the prior fiscal year. So when we actually took the project closeout report to council, there's a little more detailed information that. I'd be happy to get you. I don't have it at my, at my disposal right now, but there is, there is going to be a, a, a project balance left. At the closeout and, and it will revert to the appropriate fund balances. I know that project is a collection of about three different funding sources. And the unspent balances will essentially go back, you know, in, in proportion to where they came from.
Okay, so, so at some point, hopefully soon, we're going to get an explanation of what the status is. Of all the projects that are carryover.
I think that that may be part of some of the information that you got today. That maybe you haven't had a chance to look through yet, but, but yeah, we, we are putting that information together for council.
Okay, okay, and then. Other question I have is the money that's sitting in street maintenance comes from a bunch of different sources. It comes from the Senate Bill One, it comes from Measure A, and it comes from. Gasoline tax and it comes from sales tax, generally speaking. I looked, I tried to find in the notes and the spreadsheets what assumptions we're using going forward. About those revenue sources. And it looked to me as if it was assuming, assuming the status quo of normal revenue. I.e. the sales tax volume would be the same, the gasoline sales would be the same for Measure. One and all of that. And I want to confirm what, what financial assumptions did you use? For those revenue sources?
That is a rather complex question because it's almost, you have, you have to answer that almost differently. For each of the funding sources, right? So, so, so for. So, so for measure, I'm sorry, for SB one, we do, we do have an updated estimate that, that we got from the state. So we have plugged in the updated number for SB one.
Going backwards, going forwards?
Yes, that, that's going forward. We also are, we also have an allocation amount that comes from the West Valley Solid Waste Contract. And that's a fixed amount regardless. So that four hundred and seventy-seven thousand figure that you will see in there, that money is fixed. And, and will not change. And there's another vehicle impact fee money in there that is fixed and will not change. In our conversations with VTA regarding both the vehicle license fee money and the local streets and roads. They are not proposing any changes to the allocations in the short term. That may change in the long term. But for what we've been getting up to this point and for the next couple of years, because in reality, the local streets and roads is a relatively. Small portion of all of Measure B funding. It's less than twenty percent. So to this point, we're holding, holding that, holding that constant. And then the last, the last component that I can recall off the top of my head is that we do have a two hundred thousand allocation. That comes from CIPR, that we combine that with our other local funds and to, to ensure that we have our. What's called the maintenance of effort. So in order to secure our state and VTA funding, we have to. Maintain the same level of funding that we had prior to both Measure B and SB one. So, so in some cases, we've refined the number and in some cases, we've held it constant. But, and I can give you more detail offline.
That was fine. That, that was the gist of what I needed to understand. Thank you. Okay.
Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question. So in the report today.
Sorry, I did forget one more thing. May I? Can you hear me? Sorry, the one project that isn't on the list at all, which I think should be. Is the Measure O for the police station needs to, cannot fund the FFNE for the police station. And we need to have a capital improvement plan for that funding of that work. And it's not on there. So I think we need to add that.
Okay. So my question is, so based on the information presented, there's eight hundred and forty-six dollars. That can be put back into the budget. Does that mean that we're now down at a two million dollar deficit?
So in, in regards to, in, in regards to the. Amount that was shared on June the ninth. Any amount that we are able to free. From the general fund while. From the CIPR. Could be used to, to reduce the. Amount. The, 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 the CIP, the CIP. Funds will be returned to the. A general fund.
So that means the amount of the deficit has gone down.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then in the first slide, it talked about the scenario three. Which is making all the tier one cuts. So is that still going to be the same of those? Since this goes down by eight hundred thousand? Brian's shaking his head yes. Okay, great, thank you. So at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any presenter or people that want to speak under this public hearing?
We do. I saw that Stuart Ching like to speak.
I'm sorry, you got cut out. How many?
I have, I showed two. For this, Stuart and Miles.
Okay. You want to queue them up?
Brian, do we want to let them in?
Yes, who do you want to do first?
Let's do Miles.
Okay, Miles says. There you go.
Miles, are you wanting to speak on this item?
Yeah, I would. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, is it possible I can share my screen?
Uh, can we, I don't know that we can do that.
No, we don't have those capabilities. Attendees can't share their screen.
Okay, because I prepared a short presentation about the budget and the budget's expenditure and such. I can email it to all of you later, that's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to talk a bit about our budget since I realized that we're facing a shortfall this year and a lot of the recent actions. So in the proposed 2021 budget, the city's expenditure for the police departments, more than $20 million. And it's more than a third of the city's total expenditure. And it's still a 4.7% increase from the previous year. Currently, the budget proposes a $399,000 reduction in police spending via the reduction of non-sworn personnel. And that's only 1.96% of the police department's budget. Yeah, this is still a net increase over the previous fiscal year. In fact, the police expenditure is before transfers out, increased by an average of $522,000 each year between 2008 and 2018. June 9th, 2021 fiscal year budget proposal, Campbell's Police Department expenditures represent more than a third of the city's annual budget expenditures. As a resident and taxpayer, I'm a bit concerned that this is an ineffective use of city funds. So I did some digging. And after collecting data from the FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting Program and Campbell's annual budgets from 2008 to 2010, found that there was almost little to no correlation between the increase in police expenditures and reduction in violent crime or reduction in property crime. So that's a little concerning for me as a public, as a resident Campbell and a taxpayer to see that you guys are spending more money on the police every year, but there's no actual reductions in crime. And in light of that information alongside Mayor Landy's call to action at the June 2nd City Council meeting, and I quote, "for each of us to become part of the solution," end quote, regarding the killing of George Floyd, I must request a reduction of funds away from the police department and towards other city programs. Case in point, between June 20, between 2015 and June 11th of this year, 22 cases were ruled to suicide, according to the data reported to me by the Santa Clara County Medical Examiner's Office. Suicide hurt the city of Campbell and further spending on the police without addressing the dangers of self-harm and other mental illnesses within the community would be an ineffective use of taxpayer dollars. Aside from the mental health crisis program, there's been a statement to, made by the community to help implement the support of public during the COVID-19 crisis.
Excuse me, Miles?
Yes?
Unfortunately, you have exceeded your two-minute time limit. Can you please finish the, whatever, the last sentence?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that it's an ineffective use of taxpayer dollars to continue increasing the police budget when there are other city funding requirements that need to be met, especially during a crisis like COVID-19. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Stuart, I guess is next.
Hey, good, good evening, everybody. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. Stretching 1364 originally Drive. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. I have the, you know, I serve on the planning commission. I just want to say a few words about the agenda item that came up on last week's meeting. And we reviewed for consistency against the general plan, the capital projects for 2020. I was alone in voting against this on the basis of the acquisition or planned acquisition of the Bearcat armored vehicle. I found it inconsistent on two items. One policy HS 2.1. An extract from that, it says facilities and equipment that meets citizens' needs. And the reason for me refusing to sign that off was, how do we know what the citizens' needs are? And when I was answering Chief Berg about that, I, I didn't get a particular sense of comfort that we had actually properly polled the citizens' needs as to the need of an armored vehicle. The second one, which I felt uncomfortable with, was Strategic Objective 4.1, the feeling of safety within the community. Now, the Campbell city buying an armored personnel truck, while that might make some people feel safer, I'm pretty sure, and I, I refer to myself in this, I don't feel any safer seeing an armored personnel truck roaming the cities of, roaming the city of Campbell. And I'm sure there's minority groups, especially in the current unfortunate climate, who would feel very uncomfortable about seeing this, seeing this group. So those were the reasons I objected to it and didn't sign off on the consistency against the plan. And just as a resident, very quickly, I, I would say I don't see why, I haven't seen the rationale and justification for a city of 44,000 to buy a $250,000 armored, armored truck. I don't think the optics are particularly good. And I haven't seen a, a really valid argument for why this is necessary. And that's over my two minutes, so thank you for your time, for the time.
Close to the two minutes, very good. Are we to respond to comment, to people? Brian, can we respond?
You can, and I'm not sure if, if you want to respond individually, and I'm not sure if there's additional comments. You want to make sure you've gotten all the comments?
Andrea, are there other people wishing to speak?
There are no other attendees that are logged on wishing to speak.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this point and bring it back to council for discussion. And I will make one statement about the Bearcat armored vehicle. It is not in the 2021 budget. It's in the 2122 budget, so it, it is a year away. It is showing up there because of the five-year CIP. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go through with council to see if people have any discussion items. I can start with Rich. You're on mute. Can't hear you, Rich. Can't hear you.
Still no?
There, now you can.
Good. No, I mean, I guess all I wanted to call for is we're down to, so we got what, 10 minutes left? Is that our timeframe here?
Well, we can, we can go a little bit over. Todd has said he can do his vehicle mile travel in 45 minutes instead of an hour, right? Okay, so go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I know there's been a lot of controversy with the, I know there's been a lot of controversy with the Bearcat or whatever the official name is. It would be good if, if we had more time, it sounds like we doesn't, we don't hear it. And I understand it's, it's a year off, so. That to me is a side issue. I think there was other issues about the budget. But I understand that was explained at the beginning that it's not apples to apples. We're talking apples to oranges, last year's budget versus this year's budget. And again, I think maybe Berg could address that issue. And there was a third issue we got a lot of emails about that were buying a lot of armory type of stuff, you know, guns and ammunition this year as opposed to last year. Again, from what I understand from Chief Berg, that's not exactly, because we're, we're talking about CIP, it's going to go differently year, each year. So that part doesn't bother me at all either. So I don't know, it's, it seems proper to give Chief Berg a few minutes to, to sort of summarize these things that I, I don't know how many emails we're all getting, but kind of all saying the same thing. So it'd be kind of interesting to hear him. I know I'm at you there, but you're in the room to hear you possibly reiterate that. And I do understand we're very close for time, but it seems to be a focus and it was certainly a focus of the two speakers. That's my only thing right now. Everything else seems like it's a line. Thank you.
Chief? Madam Mayor, if I may have a minute or two of the time to just kind of give some background and reference to the CIP. As was noted, this was originally being requested for this upcoming fiscal year based on COVID and the other budgetary issues that are going on. The decision was made to push it off to next year. But I don't, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that this is a crucial piece of safety equipment. And the, the willingness to push it off a year should not be interpreted as this not being needed, needed in our police department. Right now, we are relying on other agencies, their equipment to come in when we need help. We're, we're relying on their policies and procedures and employees who will be operating the rescue vehicle. And there's also issues revolving around communication and potential issues that that may cause. I know we've all been reading the, the emails and there's a lot of discussion going on nationwide with, in regard to, to policing. And I'm very interested and willing to be a part of those conversations. I think we all have area to grow and improve. And if we're not moving forward, I think we're moving backward. But when it comes to equipping our officers with the appropriate equipment to do their job safely, that is of the utmost priority to me. And I think that you have all reiterated the importance of public safety in our community. And public safety is expensive. And a lot of those times, we are purchasing equipment that we hope that we never have to use. But our officers are working in an environment that is unwinnable at this point. They are going out there and putting their lives at risk each day. And the officers in Campbell are doing it with a smile on their face because they understand their role in this community. They're excited to be a part of it. They're excited to be a part of the future of, of this, of this community. But at the end of the day, they're being put into situations that are life and death situations. And while I understand that a vehicle like the Bearcat visually is, is, can be scary to some, some people, the work that our officers do on a daily basis is scary work. When you look at the statistics countywide, we have the second lowest ratio of officers per 100,000 citizens. We have the second highest crime rate in Santa Clara County. We have the most reports per officer and the second most arrests per officer in this county. We do a great job keeping our community safe. And I don't say those numbers to, to say that this isn't a safe community because it's an extremely safe community. But the idea of moving forward, saying that there won't be dangerous situations in Campbell, I think is naive. And we have multiple examples of that over the last year. We've talked about the Denny's incident that was 11-hour standoff with an armed man inside of Denny's, armed with a handgun. We relied on two other agencies to bring their armored vehicles out in order to safely resolve that situation. We had an incident two weeks ago that we were, we served a swat, search warrant on an individual who was selling assault weapons online. We relied on another agency to do, to use their armored vehicle to, to safely resolve that situation. So moving forward, saying that Campbell doesn't need this and that, that were, I think one of the emails that was really bothersome was equating this request to a child wanting a toy that a friend had. This is not a game. The work that our officers do is not a game. It's life and death. It's life and death for them and potentially for our community. And my, my focus is, is on providing outstanding public safety for this community. And in order to do that, sometimes it requires expensive equipment. So my, my, my message to you on purchasing for the police department is I assure you that I'm not going to be requesting equipment that's not necessary for public safety. And while I understand the dialogue that's going on nationwide, my focus is on Campbell. And if you look at our track record and our policies, procedures, our, how we have handled difficult situations, I think that you'll find that it's pretty hard to find an agency to match up against us. So as you can tell, I, I feel pretty passionately about our department. I know there's a lot of controversy going on, but I, I think when we're talking about the Bearcat specifically, please don't misinterpret the idea of, of my willingness to push it off as, as we not needing it, because we need it today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go back to comments, Anne. Do you have comments? You're on mute.
So I just wanted to say, thank you, Chief Berg. I, I do understand the need for it. I think with the current situation in, in the state and in the country, a lot of people don't understand the need for it. And so I think it would be, and we've certainly gotten a lot of emails about it and think it's, you know, not necessary for the safety of our community. Perhaps it might be helpful to provide some additional information to the cost factor and, and, and how many times did we use our previous armored vehicle? And what do you anticipate? We, we had to use, and neighboring agency had to borrow a vehicle. And put in perspective that it was used and, and what it was used for, and maybe that might help a little bit better?
No, I think that's, that's a great idea. And we're actually just working on creating a forum for our community members to ask questions and give us the opportunity to give some, some actual numbers and more specific information on it. Just quickly to, to address one of your questions, over the last 18 months, we've had 11 separate incidents where the, where a, an armored vehicle was necessary to safely operate. And I think it's important to really focus on, regardless of what this equipment looks like, this is a rescue vehicle. This isn't going to be going out there and being involved in riots and assaulting different locations or people. This is about keeping people safe, our officers and our community.
Thank you. Any other comment, Anne? Paul?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for explaining that. I think, I think you made an important point. We need, we're talking about Campbell. We can't paint Campbell with a brush what we might paint Houston parts elsewhere. I think in my experience here, Campbell is the community policing model that cities are striving for these days. And I think if people don't know the details of the Denny's situations that you raised, that's a perfect one because avoiding any kind of violent confrontation, any injuries, but taking 11 hours, 12 hours, whatever it was to do it. I remember at the time, the complaints I was getting were that it was, it took them too long. They should have moved on. They blocked my street, things like that. Who wouldn't like to hear that their police department took too long to de-escalate a problem? And everybody walked away saying, thank you for that. I, I want to just point out that for the people, and, and one letter in particular I got, I don't remember who sent it, it was a little incredulous of we need this like in Campbell, we don't have this in Campbell. Campbell, Campbell is but the 10th largest city in the country and in one of the worst, worst gang areas in that 10th largest city. Unlike the statistics I think you'll see in San Jose and in the county, for the last five years, year to year, our crimes are, our major part one crimes are down. And that's homicide, rape, robbery, assault, burglary and theft. Down year to year, over five years, down almost 6%. That's amazing in this environment because criminals don't have boundaries, right? We, we have people come in. I think that's a testament to, to the force. What worries me when we look at blanket cuts is I don't think we'll be more efficient with fewer resources. We're already fairly, fairly thin and operating below, below what we have in the past. So the last thing I'll, so I support what we need to keep people safe and to do the job and keep us safe. The last thing I'll comment is, that team, we can't reform and do things better. And I spoke to the chief and we've talked about this. There are always ways to do things better, but people need to understand take money here and then we throw X dollars into mental health. Sound like passing the buck. The county is mandated by statute and by funding. Bond measures we pay, taxes we pay for mental health services. And what I think is incumbent on us to do is to make sure that we are getting our share of those resources. Would I like to see a mental health professional go out on calls with the police when needed? Sure, should that be funded by the county? Yes, without, without regards to our funding. So we can do things to reform and make it better and, and to get more resources, working with the county. And we don't have to go drastic to where we reduce resources on the police and risk not only the, the population, the, the public, I should say, but also the officer's safety. So I'm supportive. And as far as the vehicle, look, we have a year to have this discussion. I think a good point was made. It isn't driving. It isn't driving around Campbell. It's not a, it, it, it's used for very specialized things like a Denny's situation to keep people safe. And I support that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you. So, um, I have a couple of comments. I'll focus on the two. It's unfortunate that we aren't having sufficient time to discuss this as council is warranted to have. The community center track resurfacing and the Campbell Park bicycle pathway and the JD Morgan restroom and the JD Morgan parking. Those are all projects that we have funding for now. And they're all shown in years going forward. And as staff is looking at whether we retain staff, how staff is being efficiently utilized, I would like to suggest that council support taking a hard look at what projects we could do now with our existing funding in the park, Parkland funds. I've been a supporter of buying land for parks for eons. So I am on my previous comments, given where we are. I do think, uh, Community Development Director Kamoyan mentioned some other big projects coming up that wouldn't replenish the fund faster than we would normally have considered. So I think we know the tracks needs work. We know the bicycle path needs work. We know we need the restrooms and the parks. So I would like to ask council to support taking a look at adding those projects to this year's funding. I think they would really benefit. And Councilmember Resnikoff and, and others at our priority session talked about spending a priority on open space and park and rec. So to me, I think we were, we were following through on what we suggested as our priority. So I'd like to suggest that. The second is I'd like to offer a compromise. I appreciate everything that Chief Berg has said and the quality and services that our police department consistently provides. They have removed these, the item of the Bearcat and also the SWAT sniper rifles to following years. But I see a strike them from the list. Reason I would like to see that is because we need, as I didn't know until just now, and I think council should be involved in any community meeting to help think our way through what, what this current situation of, of Black Lives Matter and public safety period. The president just signed an executive order and San Jose and San Francisco police have just signed revisions. And everybody else is talking about it. So I'd like us to have the meetings with the community, spend the, whatever time is necessary, pulling all of those perspectives together. And I think a positive step, just a simple positive visual image, is to strike those two items from the list. When we understand things better. I don't dispute that it's safety for everybody, but I think we need to be, make a significant positive step right now. And that would be to suggest just striking them from the list, do a community outreach and then coming back next year.
Is that, you have more comments? No.
Oh, yeah, sorry. And I still, we still need to add the FFE for Measure O that needs to be on this CIP budget.
So Liz, if you add the projects that you mentioned, how much do those total to add into the budget? Because we already are in the shortfall.
Well, the money's sitting in an account we're not using. The money is sitting in an account we're not using.
So you're not talking about using anything out of the general fund?
No, no. I'm using only park fund funds, only park.
So your recommendation is to move them into the 2021 year instead of being out farther?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Rich? You're on mute.
Yeah. So I, um, Chief Berg, I thought when we talked that the ammunition is, that is not something that's been taken off, correct?
Um, ammunition wasn't on the CIP. What was on there were the patrol rifles and sniper rifles. And that is from the current fiscal year and those have already been purchased.
Okay, so we're not talking, the only thing we're talking about really of putting off would be the Bearcat, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the vice mayor's talking there. And then I'm assuming when everyone's saying they're supporting Parkland, that it sounds like there's kind of a change of heart here that hopefully when we start talking about the trail, that there's going to be a lot of support for that. If not, I wouldn't be in favor of pushing forward with other things. It seems like it should be a priority if we're going to do anything.
Okay. Uh, the Creek Trail is not funded through general fund. That's why it's not on the, um, there's no recommendation to cut it at this point. It is not funded by the general fund. The projects that are on the list and the money, the 800,000 are things that either the money was left over and it's putting back into the general fund. But there's no conversation in that about what comes out of park program, park projects. Is that clear?
It's clear. I still, without some, at least, I mean, without the council going forward on something like that, it seems silly to go for some of these other things. But.
But what mean? I'm sorry, I don't understand what you, the, the trail and that is not in general fund. And so that has not been taken off the list or suggested to be taken off the list. What Vice Mayor is asking is that projects that are out of other Parkland funds be put on this current list. Instead of being out two years.
I wouldn't be in favor of that, thank you.
You would or would not?
No.
Okay. Um, I'll make a couple of comments. Um, these are very challenging times right now, not only with the COVID, the budget shortfall, uh, the issues that are happening with Black Lives Matter and the issues regarding our pu- public safety department. Um, I think it's great that we're going to have a public engagement process to look at what is we're doing currently and what we can do. Um, I would concur with Vice Mayor that it would be nice to have the council involved in some way. Um, and I, at this point, would say leave what's on the list that we can. We are going to have a budget update almost every month. And we're going to revisit the whole entire budget in September. So by then, hopefully we've had some, um, public engagement, uh, meetings and conversation. And I, from my perspective, that would be the time of whether we start taking projects on or off the list. Okay, we're out of time. Um, we do need a recommended action. Um, is there anybody that would like to make the motion?
I'd make a motion.
Liz?
Uh, I make a motion that the city council adopt the capital improvement plan as presented with the deletion of the Lenco Bearcat and, uh, the additional Parkland projects.
So this is different than the recommended action in the memo?
Yes.
Okay. And you have said adopt right now versus review?
We've already reviewed it.
But we're not, um, the next week on the 25th is when we do the final fiscal year budget.
Um, I will stand corrected on the language. Um, I was intending to, to use the appropriate language for the actions that we're taking. And it says here that the city council continue to review fiscal year operating budget and capital improvement plan as presented, provide, provide direction to staff. So that motion doesn't make sense to me. So, um, I'm just saying that we recommend approval of the capital improvement plan. Um, as presented with the two, two exceptions I mentioned.
Okay. Do we have a second on this motion?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes, who's that? I'm sorry.
Todd. I just wanted to maybe provide a little clarification and make sure that I'm understanding what's being proposed with regard to moving the park projects up. Um, I thought I heard, uh, the track resurfacing, the Bud, uh, the JDM restrooms and the, and the JDM parking lot all being proposed for, for year one. I would tell you that unless something else changes, we would not have the capacity to address all of those in year one. We would have to either reprioritize other projects or, or revisit some other issues that we've already discussed regarding the operating budget.
So that's, that is in fact my point. We're, we're piecemealing this discussion and it's very hard to have half of the discussion and the other half of the discussion. I understand it has operating impact. I do understand that. For the record, I added the Campbell Park Bicycle Pathway.
I think we actually do have that one in, in, in year one. So I don't think we'd have to change that to accommodate that one.
Okay.
That was already there.
Okay, I got it. Too many pages.
Okay, um, do we have a second on this motion? Uh, seeing none, uh, does someone want to make another motion?
Um, Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I need to just pull up, excuse me, because I need to pull up a different screen. I'm working on a laptop here. And, and my, my comment, if I may refer to that, is the, the reason by thinking people need to understand, as you said, few years are not funded. We will be coming back not only monthly now, but the next council, which will be a different council by, by nature of, of elections, will be funding the next budget. So we may lay something out there, it's not funded. So we should make that clear. As far as the other projects being here, directed to the person who answered the question I was going to ask, if we don't know that we can do them, I don't think it's appropriate to add things in that can't get done. Like we need to. So I'll make a motion that the city council continue to review the proposed fiscal year 2020, 21 fiscal year, 2020, 21 operating budget and 2021, 2025 capital improvement plan. CIP is presented, provide direction to staff to proceed with finalized budget and establish June 25th, 2020 as a date for a public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and CIP as well as the GANs.
I'll second.
Second, uh, roll call please, city clerk?
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Um, could I ask for clarification? I, I didn't hear all of the, the motion. Are we voting on the year one projects that are listed in the staff report on page 231?
Yes.
Yes, I added nothing in, Anne. Uh, uh, Councilmember Bybee, I did nothing in other than the recommendation, as is.
Thank you. I'm supportive of that.
That was a yes.
Does a yes, okay. Councilmember Resnikoff?
I support.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
I didn't hear her answer. You're on mute. Is that enough?
I'm sorry, one more time.
My answer is no.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Water, Mayor Landry?
Yes, Mayor Waterman. We're going back a year here, Andrea. Okay, so we're at nine, I'm sorry, 6:47. We are now going into our study session regarding vehicle miles traveled. Uh, do we, we hang up this call and we pick up the other, no, we stay on?
Madam Mayor, uh, we'll stay on this call. Uh, we just need a brief moment for technology to get the next meeting started. So if you provide the city clerk just a brief moment here, uh, she'll let us know when she's ready to start the study session here. Just, just.
Okay. So I'm, I need to take a minute break. So I'm going to turn my video off and I'll come back in in a minute.
Yeah, it should just take a minute here. Okay, 30 seconds.
Back. Okay, city clerk, let me know when you're ready.
Eddie?
All right, thank you. I call to order the study session meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. The study session city council meeting is conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-29-20 issued by the governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on channel 26, the city's website and on YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend meetings at the city hall council chambers physically. However, those wishing to participate are asked to register in advance using the link that's printed on the agenda online. After registering, you will receive a confirmation containing information about how to join the meeting. Speakers will be allocated up to two minutes for public comment. Deputy City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Here.
Councilmember Bybee?
Present.
Councilmember Resnikoff?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Here.
Mayor Landry?
Present. Thank you. Do we do public comments again? Deputy Clerk? We do public comments as an open forum or? I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what we're, if we're asking for public comments before we have the agenda item?
Yeah, we, we can have public, public comments, um, similar to, to oral requests.
Okay, do you have any at this time?
Um, I have one. I'm not sure if it's related to the study session. Um, and I see that he is in attendance. Ryan, if you could let the other Ryan, um, speak and we can find out if he's on oral request.
And, and what is the person's name? Brian?
Ryan Rajabi.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Yes, my name is Ryan Rajabi. Uh, am I supposed to pose my question now?
Well, are you regarding the vehicle mile travel conversation? Or are you on another agenda item later?
No, I'm on a different agenda item that I pose, okay.
Yeah, so right now, this is the study session and we're discussing vehicle miles traveled for SEQA review. Uh, after this meeting at 7:30, the official council meeting starts. And if that is when you want your item discussed, uh, let the clerk know which item you're talking on.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, Ryan, can you let me know now what item you'd like to speak on?
Are you there? Brian?
Yes, I'm here. So I wanted to speak on opening Campbell Avenue for outdoor dining and seating on the, on the street.
Okay, that is under open forum in the next part of our agenda. It is not currently on our agenda. So we will ask you after 7:30 under oral request.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to introduce our Public Works Director, Todd Capurso. Hi, Todd. And just let's do a little check in on time. We're about seven minutes to seven. And we need, at 7:25, we need to transition into the other meeting.
Understood.
That's my pressure.
We're going to do our best to get you there. So thank you for that. Uh, so that means I should talk less and hand it over to the folks that really know this material far better than, than. Uh, so that means I should talk less and hand it over to the folks that really know this material far better than, than I. But as a quick lead in, I think you are all aware that, uh, there are some changes coming to how we will analyze the transportation impacts, particularly of development projects under under Sequo review. Uh, Senate Bill 743 will change that. And in essence, it takes the focus off of, uh, what we used to call level of service impacts, which means impacts at individual intersections. And we will now be focused on VMT, which stands for vehicle miles traveled. So what we're, in essence, what we're trying to do is minimize the travel impacts of, of a development project, um, which is more of a countywide or, or regional impact and it's less localized. And, uh, we, we entered into contract with Hexagon Transportation Consulting. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gary Black here in just a second. But also want to let you know that, uh, I'll be on, on this session and our traffic engineer, Matthew Jew is, I believe he's on the call. Yes, I see him in a little square. So we're all here. And, uh, and I'm going to ask Cecil or Ryan if, uh, at some point you could, you can allow Gary Black from Hexagon Transportation, if you could share the screen with him so he can go through his presentation. And I will hand it over now. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. You're on mute.
Okay. Now I'm unmuted, right?
Correct.
Okay, uh, let me share the screen here. Uh, if I can find what I want to share. Okay. I'm not finding it. So let's try again. Looking for the PowerPoint presentation, which I can't seem to be able to find here. Oh, maybe show all windows? No. Okay, let's try this. Um, sorry about that. Now are we seeing the PowerPoint?
No, we see your list of files.
Um,
It's like your email.
Right. So let me do new share. And share. Now are we seeing the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, so we're going to talk about VMT. Todd also already gave an introduction and we don't have a lot of time, so we'll go pretty quickly through here. Level of service, um, you know what that means. Vehicle miles traveled is, is a typically expressed in daily miles per person. So as an example, if I, uh, live 10 miles from, from work and I drive 10 miles to work in the morning and I drive 10 miles back home in the evening, then I have, um, traveled, um, for 20 vehicle miles that day. And so that's simply all that it is. You can see that if I live, if I moved closer to work, so it's only five miles away, then I would travel five and five and, um, that would only be 10 miles. So you can see that reducing VMT has advantages to the transportation system. This all comes about because of Senate Bill 743, which was adopted in 2013. It's taken now seven years for the Governor's Office of Planning and Research to promulgate the rules, uh, for implementing uh, Senate Bill 743 and switching over to looking at VMT instead of intersection levels of service when we're doing transportation analysis for evaluation of new developments. Important to remember, this is only for Sequo evaluation of new development. It doesn't apply to existing development. OPR stands for the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. And the new metric that we need to start using is VMT. And we need to start using that July of 2020, which is coming up very quickly. So that's why we're doing this, um, study session today. This is an introduction to some of the topics that need to go into a VMT policy. And at a subsequent meeting, we will, uh, Hexagon in conjunction with your staff, will be presenting a, a proposed VMT policy for the city. But tonight is to introduce the topics. Um, so why VMT? This came about originally to allow infill development, uh, development, um, in, uh, built up urban areas. In the past, when you look at level of service, it really, uh, was very difficult to, to approve because levels of service tend to be bad in built up areas. You have a lot of congestion. And and therefore, um, infill projects had a rough time if you look at level of service. However, you think about the overall transportation system, infill development is good because it involves short trips and also there's opportunities for other modes. Uh, there's usually good transit service. There's things within walking distance. And so the, um, legislature wanted to encourage this type of development. And as OPR was developing the guidelines, they thought, well, why not extend this to all developments since reducing VMT is good, really good for everyone. It reduces emissions. And also it reduces the burden on the transportation system, the overall burden. This is what OPR recommends go into your policy. And we're going to talk about each one of these points, um, individually. So they, and they suggest that you adopt a policy that seeks to reduce VMT by 15% below existing conditions, uh, to encourage development in proximity to transit, to exempt small developments. So don't burden small developments with, um, doing VMT analysis. Encourage local serving redevelopment, uh, retail development and, um, exempt affordable housing. So those are the OPR recommendations. We'll go over each one of these. So this is a map that was prepared by, uh, the Valley Transportation Authority, VTA, to help with all the member cities implement SB 743. This you can see, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this is a map that shows Campbell in kind of in the color. And if you can see, there's some crosshatching here. I don't know if you can see the crosshatching, but what that shows is areas of Campbell that are within a half mile of a major transit corridor or a major transit station. And you, as you can see, about two thirds of Campbell is within a half mile of a major transit corridor. So that's one of the screen, one of the criteria that OPR suggests that you could use. And projects that are within that half mile would be presumed to have a less than significant impact on VMT because they have transit as an option. Um, another, um, what we're calling screening criteria are for small infill projects. The the OPR recommendations are that anything that would generate less than 110 daily trips can be considered small. Here's some examples of things that would generate less than 110 daily trips. 10 single family homes, 20 multifamily homes, 10,000 square feet suite of office and so forth. So there, it suggested that those projects are small enough. They don't really have much impact on the transportation system. So they can be screened out. OPR also recommends that local serving retail projects can be considered to have a less than significant impact because if, as you can imagine, if, um, if retail, if additional retail development goes into an area, that typically involves shorter trips because now instead of driving five miles to the grocery store, maybe you only have to drive one mile to the grocery store because there's new grocery stores. So that's seen as a, as beneficial to have local serve, additional local serving retail development. What is the definition of local serving though? That's up to the individual jurisdiction to determine. OPR recommends that the definition be 50,000 square feet. However, I can tell you by working with other cities, uh, they're kind of all over the map in terms of what constitutes, uh, local serving retail. So that's a decision point there. And we just listed some examples of, of the square footage of some of the development in Campbell. For example, a Safeway store is 53,000 square feet and a Whole Foods is 31,000 square feet. Of course, Fry's and Home Depot are much bigger than that. OPR also suggests that you can screen out 100% affordable housing because studies have shown that affordable housing or residents of affordable housing tend to, um, generate lower VMT than market rate housing. Now we want to spend a little bit of time on this because this shows existing numbers. So let's spend a little bit of time on this chart. And and VMT is analyzed usually separately for residential development versus employment, jobs, for example. So I'm going to look at the 2015 average residential VMT. So this is daily average VMT per person. In the nine county region, it's 13.95 miles. Santa Clara County, it's 13.33 miles. And in Campbell, it's 13.74 miles. So Campbell is a little bit higher than the average for the county, a little bit lower than the average for the region. Now let's look at jobs. The average for the Bay Area is 15.33 daily VMT per job. And if you imagine that's when you go to work and you go home, um, that, those get added together. So that's kind of saying that on average people are live seven and a half miles away from where they work in the Bay Area. Um, and then for the Santa Clara County, it's 16.64, Campbell is 14.63. So Campbell is lower than, than the Bay Area and lower than the county average already. And as I said, um, OPR recommends a threshold that's 15% below existing conditions. But you get to decide as a council, what existing conditions you're going to compare to. Are you going to compare to the region? Are you going to compare to the county? Or are you going to compare to the city? You have a choice. And what if we find that a development would not meet the threshold that you have established? What can you do to reduce VMT? Well, you can reduce the vehicle trips. So you can have people carpool or ride their bikes or take transit. So that's um, the typical way to reduce VMT. The other way to reduce VMT is to make investments in other types of transportation such as sidewalks, bike lanes, things like that. I would not only encourage people of a new development to use alternative modes, but even existing development could take advantage of investments that are made in sidewalks and such. Um, I like you, I like to use the word wither. So I put this wither LOS. So what happens to level of service? As we said at the beginning, level of service is no longer under Sequo, a measure of transportation impact. Only VMT. But that doesn't mean that you don't look at LOS anymore, that you don't have to or aren't allowed to, I should say, look at LOS. You can still look at LOS if you want to, under, under your city policy and but you don't have to. It's up to you whether you want to, um, maintain a level of service policy in your general plan. I can tell you that all the cities that we're talking to so far um, are interested in retaining level of service as something that gets studied for new development and have either are going to or already have policies in their general plan that speak to levels of service and, and how, how they want their road system to function and then measure new development against that. The only difference is that it can't be identified as a sequel impact. Um, if you keep global service, the analysis is more, is this project consistent with your general plan policies? So the questions, we say questions to consider. So these are some of the factors that go into um, what your policy is going to be, which as I said, um, we're going to come back with a recommended policy working with your staff. But tonight, if you have any thoughts on any of these topics, then we would, we, uh, more than be more than happy to hear what your thoughts are. So so what is considered small development? I said that the OPR recommendation is less than 110 daily trips. Most of the cities we're working with have adopted exactly that. But there is flexibility. What is considered local serving retail? OPR suggests less than 50,000 square feet. The cities we're working with are all over the place on this one. Some say it's 10,000 square feet. Some say it's 100,000 square feet. Some say that we know it when we see it. We're not going to, we're not going to establish an actual square footage threshold. We're going to take it on a case by case basis and make a determination. A question, should the impact threshold be 15% below the current citywide average per resident, per employee? Should transit priority areas be, um, considered and basically exempted? One important point to make on that is that if those areas are exempted and there's development in that area, then there's no, um, opportunity to condition that development to reduce its VMT. You could, you, if you had some other ordinance, say a transportation demand management ordinance, you could, you could invoke that. But some cities, even though they could uh, screen out projects in the transit priority area, have, have elected not to do that because they want all projects to implement trip reduction measures as part of the, um, part of the Sequo evaluation process. Should affordable housing be exempt? Um, most cities that, that are, that we've, that we've worked with, um, have exempted affordable housing. And then last, you want to maintain, uh, level of service policy in Campbell. And as I said, all the cities that we've worked, that we're working with have elected to, uh, to maintain a level of service policy. So that was very, very quick overview. Sorry for the speed there, but I wanted to give maximum time for any members of the council to provide us any thoughts that they have after hearing the presentation or seeing these areas to think about.
Can you return the screen?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That was very quick. 15 minutes left, right? Yep, 15 minutes. So, um, I will start with Rich. Do you have questions or comments? Is there any sense of the questions that he asked? If you have any, no. How about Anne? You don't want to answer any of the questions that he's asked?
To be honest, I wasn't prepared to in, in a short presentation like this. I, I need to have some dialogue and some hearing, hearing what others have to say. So.
Well, I, I, you know, I especially want to hear, you know, this, this is Todd's special group. So that I think they need to pay in either now or sometime in the future.
Why don't we let Todd then make some comments and then we'll go to Paul?
Yeah, I, I, I guess, uh, well, I, I appreciate you, you allowing me a, a chance to, to just give a few comments here. Um, if you, if you go back to the staff report, which I don't know if everybody has in front of you, but, uh, we, 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 we did put a a relatively short cover report together that on page, I think it's packet page five, it goes over those same six questions and it maybe helps provide a little context to what we're looking for. Um, and so I think that, uh, you know, in the, in the absence of, uh, I, I know sometimes it's hard to provide comments if, if you, if you're dealing with the abstract. So doesn't sound like we're going to get too many comments, although there's three still.
Yeah.
You'll have three council members to go. But I think, I think it might actually be easier if and when we have a policy to put in front of you. But this was the opportunity really to help, help, uh, get everybody educated. And if there are any, any initial comments and thoughts, we'd love to hear them now. But if not, that's okay. And you can react to the draft policy. I, I guess the one other, uh, instance or it, one other example that, that I might add to this is, uh, is as we go through the general plan update process, we have had a couple different, um, we've had some folks who were on the G-PAC talk about this notion of neighborhood serving retail. And, uh, it's very likely that, that, that when we start looking at that closely, I think some of the areas that were identified that I think some of the areas that were identified that were the east side of Bascom, kind of across from the prun yard as being maybe an area for local serving retail. And then the west side of Winchester, kind of south of the expressway, up in the hacienda type area. So this is a notion that our community is also familiar with. So and I think they're familiar, I think they're asking for it, maybe not directly so they can save on VMT, but this whole notion of trying to make the city more livable and make the services more convenient. So I think you will see, you know, some of these themes come back at you as the general plan process takes shape as well.
Okay, thank you, Paul. You're on mute.
I'm getting there. I was coming back from the document that Todd was talking about. So.
Can you speak a little closer to your mic?
Okay. I'm glad to hear the others agree. I mean, it's very tough on this one for me to know what the right thing to do is. I, in this kind of thing, I trust Todd, I trust the experts on this. So for example, when I hear, you know, should we, let me try to pull the, I'm trying to pull the document up again. Bear with me one second. Transit priority areas considered affordable housing exempt? I understand the logic in the presentation of maybe not, but we need to hear that from you. I would like a proposal of what Public Works thinks we should do. And I think if it's logical to me, then I support that. I have a hard time right now. I guess I could speculate some things of what if. I would like to get a stronger document that says this is what we're recommending. You have questions with it or why we're doing this? If that makes sense? And then I think it's easier to give you feedback. And we're going this path anyway, right? We have to go this path, we have no choice. I don't feel capable really directing you, what percentages and where should we go and what should we exempt? I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm more or less in the same area as everybody else. This is all new. I mean, I have been reading up on this a little bit, so I understand that the legislation is what it is. And we, as Councilmember Resnikov just said, we have to do it. So what I'm looking for is a better understanding of if the number's higher, is it better? Or if the number lower is better? So if you, when you come back to us. So the 110 daily trips, is that based on per bedroom, per unit? People, how does that number come? The other one question is the 15%. But we're, I was trying to find your questions on the staff report and I couldn't. Do you know what that is in the staff report?
Yes, Sid, if you have the staff report.
I do.
Because this is the, this is the second packet of the evening now that we're on.
Page eight of the big PDF.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, Todd.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm on page 12. It's different numbering, but okay, I think I've got it.
But page five of the report, page eight of the PDF.
Page five of the report.
Yeah.
Well, that is taking me into a fact sheet, so whatever.
Okay.
What I want to know is, you're talking about local, what do you call it? Local business? Should it, should it, is 50,000 a good thing for the community? Or is 25,000 a good thing for the community? I don't understand which would be better. So when you come back with a recommendation, you need to help us understand whether it should be low or high. Same thing with, you have something about 15% below. Is it better to be below the highest number or the lowest number? Not clear. How often does that number change? Does that get reevaluated once a year, once every five years? So, or is that number, once you set it, it's set for good? I put some, and if something doesn't comply, is there a special exemption process? You know, we have, we have applications for parking and you can do a parking exception or exemption process. Is there anything involved in any of these criteria? I would support keeping our local ordinances for level of service because I think that's a tool that's relevant to the community. What was the other question?
Transit priority areas?
I don't think we have any choice on that.
Or exempting affordable housing.
Oh, so that's a tough one for me because it said 100% affordable housing. And we, at this point, that's very rare because you have to find the money in the developer. We have projects that are 15% affordable. And is there a threshold that we have to say a project that has more than 20% affordable is exempt? Or what, how would we approach that in that context?
Okay. So we have about five minutes left, Liz. I wanted to get some comments in. Do you have more?
No.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you. So I do have a little bit of experience with this, not a whole lot. I have enough to know I'm dangerous. I think we need to maintain the LOS in the general plan. It does help. Plus, people tend to understand that right now. And so if nothing else, at least in this transition, to keep that in there. I would like some examples. For instance, we just passed the Crestland project that does have some level of affordable housing. So if we could have some numbers and say, okay, here's this development. They had 10 units. Here's kind of what the impact if we exempt that. Also, when you talked about the 50,000 square feet, give us, is that the size of Home Depot? Is that the size of Staples? What is the 50,000 square foot? Like, what can we relate it to? I mean, I have known, is Home Depot 50,000 square feet? No?
No, actually, he gave, and I mean, I think Gary was actually going fat. He gave a couple of examples, and I know they were very quick. But as example, the Safeway on Winchester at Bud is 53,000. And the Whole Foods on Bascom is 31,000.
Okay.
Generally the range of what you might call local serving because it's not built in a way that it's going to attract, say, a larger segment of the population from further away. And you might not say that for 100,000 square foot retail development. So, yeah, I think we can certainly come back with some other examples and we'll, you know, and a recommendation, but sure.
Okay, and then the other one was the transit priority area. The map was very interesting. It does not include the intersection of Highway 85 in Bascom. And there's an off-ramp there. And it does go down the middle of Campbell through Campbell Avenue. So why, that's a bus route, that's not a freeway route. And so have a little better understanding of what these transit priority areas are as it relates to what the map prepared. I know you know about the Highway 85 meeting we had yesterday. They're talking about maybe adding a lane. They may talk about adding a transit station at Bascom. So why is that not in a transit priority area? And then why are the others in the transit priority area? I would like a better understanding of like what the Vice Mayor was saying is, is it better to be 15% lower? Or is it better to be 15% higher? And because we're in the update of our general plan right now, how are these things going to merge together? How are we marrying this information? My understanding is we're already starting to think about the environmental review for the general plan. That means we got to get this in there pretty quickly. So those are basically my comments. A lot of them has come back with information for us and help us understand. And next time, we need to give you more time so we don't have to rush through like we did. Okay, so we got three minutes left. Is there anybody that you guys want to respond at all to our consultant or Todd?
Sure, I mean, well, I should first ask, were you talking to us or were you talking to the rest of the council? Because I could do a quick wrap up if you like.
Well, the other, they didn't all seem to have many comments, so.
Okay, I mean.
You and your consultant.
It doesn't sound like there's opposition to any of these things in concept. So I think we, I think these are all on the table and we will come back with recommendations. We can certainly clarify some of the issues with regard to one of your last points, Mayor, with regard to the transit area. That's really about light rail and bus routes. It's not so much about freeways. So we can maybe give a little more specific information about why certain areas of the map are identified as that. But as Gary alluded to, we may not want to exempt projects in that area because it kind of lets those projects off the hook. And so I think we'll do a little bit of research and maybe look at some best practices. And I know we've got some thoughts on, is it better to compare yourself to the county number or the regional number? And we may not compare to the same number for residential or for an employment center. We may choose different metrics. So I don't know if Gary, if you want to weigh in on that at all, but I think that's kind of where we're going to be headed.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say that I took notes of all your questions. And so, you know, I would like to prepare a, you know, response to comments document where I just list out the comments that you just made and then provide responses to them. We don't have time to respond to them right now.
Yeah, no, I don't expect.
And so, yeah.
Sorry.
I was just going to say we'll provide written responses.
Well, and I think the more tangible examples that you can have. I mean, most of us can't picture what 20,000 square feet is. Most of us can't picture, well, what if there's 20 affordable housing? What's that do? So as much as you can give some kind of physical, tangible, how it relates to our buildings, like you just said, this is how big Whole Foods is, this is how big Safeway is. That, from my perspective, that would certainly help. Any closing thoughts? We're pretty much out of time. We're good? Okay, thank you very much for coming and being here to present to us. So at this point, we have five minutes till we start the council meeting and we stay on this call, correct? Okay, so now's the time to take a break. And I understand the city clerk needs to go hit some switches and so we'll be back at 7:30.
Thank you.
Is the city clerk there?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hi, just tell us when you're ready.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, I got my handy little gavel here. I call to order the regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. The regular city council meeting is conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Executive Order N-2920 issued by the governor. The city council meeting is being livestreamed via Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. Members of the public will not be able to attend meetings at the city hall council chambers physically. However, those wishing to participate are asked to register in advance using the link located on the printed agenda online. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing information about how to join the meeting. Speakers may be allowed, allocated up to two minutes for public comment. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman.
Here.
Councilmember Bybee.
Present.
Councilmember Resnikov.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gibbons.
Mayor Landry.
Present, thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, special proclamations and presentations, I see none. Communications and petitions, I see none. Now is the time for oral requests. This is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda. These members of the public wishing to participate are asked to register in advance at the link shown on the printed agenda. After registering, you will receive a confirmation email containing the information about how to join the meeting. Speakers are allocated up to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the city from, or council from discussions or taking action at this time. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Has the deputy city clerk received any comments at this time? And this would be when, uh, Brian, who had, um, tried to speak earlier, if he's still on.
I think it was Ryan.
Ryan, I'm sorry, Ryan. Deputy.
Yes, yes, hello, this is Ryan here.
Hi, Ryan.
All right, I, I will, I'll begin. So I wanted to thank you for, for hearing me today. This is my first time viewing or attending in any capacity. So thank you for your time. I, I wanted to ask if the council has considered or is planning on considering opening, I'm sorry, closing downtown Campbell, uh, just the typical stretch that is, uh, where Farmer's Market goes through, uh, closing to car traffic so that it can be open for foot traffic, uh, on a more, um, permanent basis to allow outdoor dining and a more, um, friendly space so that there's more dining space for restaurants. And, uh, I think this, this is something that makes a lot of sense at this time where indoor dining is prohibited. So outdoor dining needs a little more space as well as it's just a nice community aspect. And I, I, this is something I've always appreciated and I think it's something we could benefit from in future years. Uh, we have beautiful weather in the summer. If there was a month where we could do this, it sounds great. We have two streets that both bypass Campbell Avenue in the downtown stretch. So it wouldn't be a significant impact and prohibit car traffic, um, from passing through. So, uh, that, that's all I have to, to ask and just wondering if there was discussion or a chance to consider that. Thank you.
Welcome to our meeting and thank you for speaking. Um, as I stated earlier, we cannot generally discuss this item, but I can say that this has been coming up over the last several weeks and that there are staff is, uh, looking into things. So I would just say to the city manager, can we, um, add this to whatever discussions you already are having?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could we just, uh, let the gentleman know that the beginning of the discussion occurred, I think, three weeks ago at a council meeting when we were discussing outdoor dining for businesses? And he might, uh, appreciate watching and listening to that discussion.
Yeah, that's what I mentioned was, um, several weeks ago, prior to allowing restaurants selling groceries, we started this. We continued it on to the other meeting where we allowed them to open on the Friday that restaurants could eat outside. So, uh, like I said, staff is, uh, looking at different things. And so I've directed the city manager to incorporate your comments into how they proceed forward. Okay, Ryan, thank you for, and, uh, city clerk, do we have any other open oral request items?
We do not.
Thank you. So now I'm going to, um, have a mayor's announcement. The City of Campbell continues to work closely with our partnering agencies to monitor how the coronavirus is impacting our communities. We are actively monitoring the information provided by the U.S. Centers of Disease Control and reviewing guidance provided by the County Public Health Department. We continue to take proactive steps to prioritize the health and safety of our employees and of our community members. Our focus is to maintain essential services and keep you informed. Following the Santa, I'm sorry, the County of Santa Clara's recent amendment to the shelter in place order, we are cautiously moving forward to reopen our downtown and other businesses in the city. Campbell residents, I'm sorry, Campbell restaurants are now open for outdoor dining, takeout and deliveries. Retail stores in Campbell are opening with some in-store shopping, subject to the guidelines of the county and are available for curbside pickup. We are progressively moving forward. We want you to be sure, I'm sorry, we want you to remind people to practice safe social distancing to help reduce the spread of infection. The County of Santa Clara directly provides free COVID-19 testing through the Public Health Department and through the Valley Medical Center hospitals and clinics, as well as through several drive-through testing locations throughout the county. To find a clinic or community testing site closest to you and make an appointment today, please visit SCCgov.org/cv19testing. I'm happy to announce that the Santa Clara Library District has contactless curbside service available Monday through Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 at all eight library locations. Patients can go, uh, patients, I'm sorry, patrons can go online to place hold on materials, then make an appointment to collect their requested books and movies from the library. For more information about the service, please visit their website as SCCLD.org. As we approach the summer months, we will begin to experience hot temperatures, especially during these critical times of sheltering in place. It is important that you take the necessary precautions, including drink lots of water, even if you don't feel thirsty. Avoid physical activity during the hottest time of the day, which is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Please take care not to leave your pets or any other people in your car while it's parked. Wearing light colored, loose fitting or lightweight clothing can help. And be sure to check out your furry friends at home to make sure they have enough water and that they stay safe in the heat. Should temperatures reach 90 degrees, the Campbell Community Center will open its cooling center. Capacity will be limited. Residents will be required to maintain a physical distance of six feet from each other, required to be wearing a mask and are asked to stay home if they are sick. For the safety of staff and other cooling center visitors, a simple health screen will be performed. For more information about the Campbell Community Center cooling centers, please visit CampbellCA.gov. Also, please continue to visit the city's website at CampbellCA.gov for up-to-date information on COVID-19, our adjusted city services, any canceled events, police department services, what's going on at the community center and other vital business resources. Thank you. All right, next on the item is the consent calendar. Is there any staff or council members or the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Ryan and then Liz?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff's recommendation that we pull item five. Uh, there is some desk items, it's going to require, uh, council to make a decision between two resolutions. So I'm recommending you pull that for discussion.
Okay, and then Liz and then Paul?
That was it.
Number five, Paul?
Number six.
Number six. Is... Okay, so do I have a motion on items one through four?
Who can say?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. So next we'll start with the number five, the calling of the general municipal elections for District One and Two and requesting consolidation of election in accordance with the California Election Code, Section 10415. And I think, Brian, you wanted to start?
Uh, there was a question about potential, um, need for use, uh, from certain council members because what the council's being asked to do is not only call for the elections, but set the, uh, ballot statement, uh, rate. And, um, I, I spoke with the city attorney and I'll let him jump in, uh, if I misspeak, but it's our understanding that you, you're able to participate in this discussion this evening without recusal. Uh, for those council members that may be up for election, um, I, so I wanted to make sure that's clear. And then I believe the city, uh, the acting city clerk will be, uh, presenting, uh, the, the two resolutions for the council.
Thank you.
Andrea, do you want to present?
Yes. So the purpose of the desk item is to present you with two new resolutions. The Santa Clara County Register of Voters now requires that we specify in our resolution how we would resolve a tie. So Resolution A, um, declares that you wish to dissolve, um, to resolve a tie by lot, which is a randomized selection or flipping a coin, if you can say. Um, Resolution B would declare that the council would have a runoff election to resolve the tie.
Okay, any, any other? That's it?
That's it, yeah, there's, there's a difference in the resolutions, uh, to the one that was provided to you initially.
Okay, and then Vice Mayor, did that answer your questions? Uh, you also wanted to pull this item?
I just wanted to make sure we pulled it so we could discuss this.
Okay.
I have a different comment, but yes.
Well, okay, do you want to?
I'm supportive of, um, the option to flip a coin. Um, it seems to be not an uncommon option and the reason I'm supporting it is it saves the city the cost of high, of conducting a special election and the delay in having the vacancy or transition, whatever happens, um, on the council. So I'm supportive of flipping the coin.
Rich?
I certainly think that. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought Liz was done.
That's right, I'll comment later, go ahead.
Oh, you're not.
There's a little lag here, okay?
Okay, I'll try to, I agree with the Vice Mayor. Um, the, the issue I'm seeing is there's a fairly good chance now that we're in districts, uh, that we're going to have two people and then possibly a runoff of two people. And then what is, what good does it have doing another runoff with the same two people? Perhaps the first person A wins, the first race person B wins, the second race. Then you have to have a third one to settle it, um, something like a, a coin toss, I think, uh, may make more sense. Cause I don't, I don't think we're going to have loads of, of people running. And I may be wrong, but every indication is there's going to be somewhere around two people running.
Okay. Paul or Ann, do you have any comments, preference? So, um, the re, the recommended action listed on the document, uh, does not add in here about the, do the, uh, tie by lot. So whoever's making the motion, please add that to your recommended action. I'll take a motion.
Can I, can I make a comment first?
Yes, Ann.
So I do, I do, uh, support the other, uh, recommendation that we do do a, a coin toss or, or something, but I think it would be important to include that information in the candidate packet so the candidates are aware that in the event of a tie, that the deciding factor will be, uh, uh, by lot. We confirm that.
Good idea. Okay.
And I would also like to make one other comment. Um, it's, I checked, it doesn't have to be in the resolution and Bill, unless Bill's, uh, city attorney tells us otherwise. Um, there's also a condition in the discussion that says the general municipal election begins on Monday, July 13th and ends on Friday, August 7th. Um, if, um, an incumbent chooses not to run, the, um, time for submitting papers is extended by one week, which would be August 8th to August 12th. So I would agree with Councilmember Bobby that, um, both, all of this information be included in the, um, packet for the, um, uh, candidates.
Okay, and Bill, do we need to add it to the most of amended, uh, recommended action?
Well, according to the, uh, County Registrar's office, we do. Um, but I, I, Liz actually is, I think, correct on the interpretation of the statute. The if, if you are electing to do it by special election, it does have to be in the resolution. If you are breaking the tie by lot, according to the way I read the statute, you don't have to. But fortunately, we've got it, two resolutions here that make it clear one way or the other. So we might as well have it in there.
I, I'd prefer to have it in there just for the official record because our note taking on these is only action oriented. So does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I have to figure out where, where it should be added. Any help, Bill?
Well...
Maybe just at the end?
You, Bill.
Oh, you're on mute, Bill.
Um, actually, since you have two alternative resolutions, you just need to pick A or B. I, I forget which one has the lot provision in it, um, but I'm sure our city clerk can tell us.
I think that's option A. So I would make a motion to that the city council, um, adopt Resolution A, uh, establishing and calling the general municipal election to be held in the City of Campbell on November 3rd, 2020, um, uh, by district, by district, for District One and District Two, and requesting services of the registrar of voters, requesting consolidation with the statewide general election in accordance with California Election Code 10418, and specifying certain procedural for the consolidated election and determining to levy costs of candidates' statements.
Okay, before we have a second, uh, you did not include in there elect one council member for District One and one council member for District Two.
I read what it said.
Okay, I'm reading the other one over here. All right.
Also.
Ann, seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Thank you, that motion passes. Okay, Paul, you called, you pulled item six?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, some comments here. I'm probably not surprised I pulled it, I was not in favor of getting her sent to this position, but, um, I, I think, I'm surprised to, to start from past discussions or move me so quickly, personally. Um, I, I think that, um, as part of the termination, we've, we've got, we've paid some money in there and I don't want to pay two people for the same job, plus a pretty hefty fee for recruiter. Good backup plan to put the deputy city clerk in there who's doing well. And I thought it's reasonable to give her more time and, and evaluate that, that position. I suspected, I thought we would do that for quite a bit longer than two months. So, um, I'm disappointed in that. Um, but, but I'm sure we're going to move forward, I'm guessing from the vote. Here's my, my, my main two comments. Um, we have spent a lot of time, not just with the clerk, but with the city manager, talking about metrics and measuring people on metrics and getting away from subjective measurements of their performance. And I don't see anything in here in the job description other than the responsibilities, um, at a high level of, of notices and elections and things like that. Um, we had people that were unhappy with very specific metrics at times, or, or I'll say functions or, or activities at times. I think we owe it to have very measurable metrics of what, for example, if, if one of the items is that you have to do proper notices, statutory notices, well, what happens if you don't and, and how many, how many is what? And we don't have that, so we're going to get right back into subjective review of this position, which I think has never worked well with the clerk or the attorney or the ma, city manager. And I name those three because they're the three that report to the council. Um, I think it's unfair to the recruiter to not specifically state what we're looking for and what concerns we have and how they're going to be measured. And it's really unfair to the applicants who have to live up to that measure. If that sounds too detailed, you know, decision based on, I think, subjective criteria, a different council starting next year could have three others that have a whole different thing, and I think we all win if, if it's really objective, not subjective. The other piece of this that surprised me was, we're authorizing, I think in here an RFP, but I don't see an RFP. I don't think we've done an RFP in the last year where we were willing to take a vote without actually seeing the RFP. We even discussed what's our involvement in picking people, and I agree with the majority, we shouldn't be involved in, in the, in the actual activity of picking the person. But we've always approved the RFP, and in this case, we don't have one. So we don't, you know, we have, talk about number of, I think you're just talking about number of applicants, and, and we'll weed it down from 15 to eight, or to three, or whatever. But we don't have a spec that says we expect some recruiter, it's getting a lot of money, to bring in so many applicants, qualified applicants at a minimum. We don't have any, any metrics, if you will, even for that. And then what happens if a person who's selected leaves soon? There's usually another recruitment going on. I'm surprised that we don't have it. So unless this is a, pulling this to say we're not going to get involved in RFPs in the future, I don't know how we move forward without knowing what this RFP is. And again, having some very, very good metrics on the position that we can measure. And I thought the committee, I would love the committee to do that. I thought they would, but the council's, so that's my comments. Absent the metrics, I'm not happy with the whole thing, but absent the metrics and absent the RFP, here, I won't vote yes on this today.
Okay, Rich?
Yeah, I certainly agree. I don't want to go too far down the line. You know, I've talked to Councilmember Bobby. I certainly respect her a lot, and I know she's on the position, as I do think we're going. I, I think it's worth spending some time, as Councilmember Resnikov has stated, kind of, that's right, we've sort of had this discussion on what's the position. I think it could be a very important position, and that's where I agree with Councilmember Bobby. But, but I don't know, it's not an RFP this proposed, or whatever that's written here looks very dated. I think we need to look at it in a different light, as I described before when we were talking about the budget. In terms of complementing, we're able to do now, because we're going to have both a clerk, and it looks like we're still going to have an assistant clerk, in trying to define those positions. What, what it looked like 10 or 20 years ago isn't generally what you have now. We don't have a technologist now, somebody who understands social media, somebody who understands presentations properly, we badly need that now. Somebody who's good at things like Photoshop. So it's one thing to say, well, that's not the city clerk, but then where is that? Then we have a lot of people who are doing some of these other positions. I think it's worth saying, certainly the clerk or the clerk group should understand about how to get on social media and get these messages out. I don't see any words about that. I, so, so somebody there should understand the basics of all these things. Somebody, I think it sort of hints at it, but certainly an accomplished speaker, because they're going to represent the city, we certainly need somebody more apt. We don't need somebody as much as a desk job. And I think that's important. The biggest I always see is the ability for the city clerk to bridge this gap between what staff will do, which is sort of the, I don't know what we call it, the, the technical level, which sometimes, as we have the past week, we're getting 6, 7, 800 page amendments, which is fine. But then, how do you, how do you translate that? Somebody who can translate that to what the council needs to see, where we're not having to spend, like we did now, on the budget, 6, 7, 8 hours, and there's a lot of frustration, or, as we saw in the second session, the study session, can say, let's get this down to a succinct thing. So somebody who could bridge that gap and be able to show that, to me, is critically important. So the clerk should have, the city clerk should have the ability, and then the city clerk staff, to reduce the level of, I know, I have a feeling the Vice Mayor won't like that term. We still need the information, but when it comes to presentations, when it comes to summary, getting us moving forward, so we're not stuck in this problem we are now, that we've seen over and over again, such as the, the general plan, where you can say, okay, to be presented to the public, this is what needs to be presented to the council. The other issue, I'd say strongly, in light of the whole strife we're seeing now in the, in society and Black Lives Matter, I think it's critical today to recruit someone who's going to complement the makeup and the current council with, to complement the count, the makeup of the council, but especially staff. It's something we really need to focus on. I think we've been lacking on that. So I think now is the time to start looking at diversity. We do have a couple of folks, and that's good, but it's not overall reflecting what I think we can do. I think we could do better on that, and I think that should be a key part of the key that finally goes out, is looking for diversity. So I think I've said enough, but I think these are kind of things that are important to me to get behind it. If there's some promise that that will be in the RFP before it goes out, and we have a second chance to approve it, then I'm okay. If we're saying, no, no, this is it, we're going to go out, and it's not going to come to the council, then I'd have a hard time approving it. Thank you.
Okay, Ann, do you want to make comments?
Yeah, I'd like to at least discuss the subcommittee meeting that we had, that Mayor Landry and I had. And we did discuss moving forward with the position, because it typically takes six months to fill a position like this. And so that would get us into November or December. So the longer we wait, the, the longer the delay is in, in hiring a city clerk. And in my view, the city clerk is a, is a vital position to the city. It's outlined in the municipal code. It's a person that is a right-hand person to the city manager, who has responsibility for many statutory duties, to ensure that there's public transparency, that records are handled properly, that FPPC regulations are enforced, public hearing notices, as well as many other administrative tasks, like an agenda process and, and other duties that are assigned. And from my own experience, I know that the responsibility for one person is more than one person can handle. It happened a couple of times when I was city clerk, and the workload in itself is, is more than just one person can handle. So I really do feel that it's, it's a critical position. There's also, you know, it, the role has changed somewhat. There, there's also new responsibilities, such as public records requests, and those have increased dramatically in the last few years. So that is our recommendation in moving forward with it, because of how critical the position is, as well as how long it takes to recruit for somebody. As far as how the recruitment is going to be handled, the subcommittee did not make a recommendation one way or the other. We've discussed the options, whether to allow HR department to handle it or to hire a recruiter. And there's advantages to having a recruiter. I'll let Brian respond to that, but we were, we were not definitely saying we need to do, have a recruitment. As far as performance objectives and measures, there are performance measures for the city clerk position that are, that are in the budget. And, and they determine how well the city clerk's office is functioning. And, and if those performance measures aren't up to what the council expects or, or would like to evaluate the city clerk on, then they can be changed. But there are performance measures in place today. And as far as the expectations of what we expect for a city clerk, that, to me, would be discussed through the recruitment process, and candidates would know that this, this is, this is the expectation of what we, of we want in the city court.
Thank you. City Manager, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Councilmember Bobby, for your clarification. I was going to comment regarding the recommendation on the recruiter. It is true that the subcommittee did discuss alternatives, and, and they weren't necessarily recommending the use of a recruiter, but simply the council considered that. I feel strongly, and it's my recommendation, that council also consider recruiter, because I believe that they'll have a far broader outreach to candidates than probably can internally, and probably have some existing, either people they've worked with or been in communication with that know maybe and rest in this type of position. I think you'll get a more robust recruiting class, and that's why I'm recommending you consider recruiter. And that they would take the direction from the council, not from, from my department or from HR staff, from, from the council, as far as the recruitment goes.
Liz, do you have any comment, questions, or I see Paul raising his hand?
Thank you. I might ask for a clarification from Councilmember Bobby. So the metrics for the, and responsibilities for the city clerk are in the municipal code? I'm not sure I heard you, you broke up.
The performance measures for the city clerk are in the budget document.
Oh, in the budget document? I must admit, I missed that. Okay.
For all departments.
Interesting. I confess, I missed that, in all departments. Okay, so I'm, I have no problem reviewing the RFP for the consultant, I think is what Councilmember Resnikov was asking. Want to make sure I understood his comment correctly. And I'm wondering if you had any comments about also reviewing the RFP? Councilmember Bobby?
I believe it's more of an RFQ, request for qualifications. I, it's a bit of a boilerplate. It's used in executive recruitments, and I don't know that it's a necessary function to bring that to the council. I'll let the city manager speak to that a little bit more, because I, that's, that's the extent of my understanding of the, of the, of what would be, what would be sent to the recruiting firms.
Thank you for that clarification, because that makes more sense to me. We're sending out a request for qualifications for various firms to show how they have the skillset and knowledge to do a search for a city clerk. That makes me feel a lot better. I think Councilmember Waterman and Resnikov both spoke to wanting to have some clarity in what the search requirements are, but not the search firm. And we can do that in discussions with the selected search firm. That makes much, much better sense to me. So I would be supportive of authorizing staff to go out for an RFP or RFQ for consulting firms to show their knowledge and skillsets to help the city select the right city clerk.
Brian, did you have comment? Paul has questions or comments?
I wanted to echo Councilmember Bobby's comments. Essentially, it is a boilerplate type of thing that we do. It is probably more of a request for qualification than is true of proposal. We'll be looking for the best qualified firm, not necessarily the cheapest proposal.
Right. Paul, you had comments?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you. So certainly, there's a difference in request for qualifications and request for proposal. And I respect Councilwoman Bobby's knowledge of the requirements for the job. I disagree that we have good, good criteria or metrics to evaluate. I think the discussions we had in, in closed session, I think, showed that everybody wasn't on the same page on those. So I'm worried that we're not going to give a good, I guess, a good picture to, to any recruiter and to applicants of what, what is important to us and how we're going to measure it, and what, what makes, what is acceptable and what is unacceptable performance. I don't think we're there, but that's, that's one thing. Just one last comment I want to make, that Councilwoman Waterman brought up something, and, and I didn't think of it earlier, I wish I had, of diversity, and it's a, it's a good point. I think Vice Mayor, I think you were on the call at the city association, listening in after the legislative. And we had a very good discussion, I thought a good discussion, on social justice or social injustice. And that was, you know, the mayor has signed along the Obama pledge and all that for mayors, and that's good. Part of that was really an impassioned plea by Mayor Constantine Morgan Hill of, things are symbolic, and they're a start, but they're symbolic, they're platitudes, but you have to take action. And he was, it was a very forceful, well, directive to act. I mean, I think, I'm looking at the Vice Mayor, and I think she agreed. Vice, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Waterman brings up a good point, and to the extent, I don't know our policies, but to the extent that we can enhance the diverse pool of candidates for this job and for other jobs, I think it's important we do that. His message wasn't lost on me. I'd like to be part of us taking some action to do that. I don't know how we do that. Logistically, I'll leave it to the city manager, perhaps, but it was a good message given to all the cities in the county, and we've taken some steps with signing on to measures and plans of what we're going to do. But let's take some definitive actions. This is the job that we have to do it, so I'm looking forward to seeing what's in there on that.
Okay. And, yeah.
Okay. So if I may, I actually don't think this resolution is the correct resolution. So the resolution is speaking to a draft description of, for the city clerk, and authorizing issuance of a request for proposals. I mean, what, what our purpose is, based on this discussion, our purpose is to authorize staff to go out for a request for qualifications for a search firm. I don't think we want to tie ourselves down right now to what the city clerk role and responsibility and metrics is. All we want to do right now is authorize the RFQ for search firms. So I, I would not be supportive of the resolution as written. I would recommend going to just something much simpler, as a resolution authorizing the RFQ for staff.
I see Rich's hands up.
Can I, Madam Mayor, can I just clarify that what we're asking? There is a revised job spec that have added some language to the specification with regard to the city clerk's duties as it relates to bid openings in the bid process. So that's.
That can be added as an attachment. It, it doesn't need to be.
We need the council to approve the job spec if we're going to recruit using that new spec.
It goes to the personnel, yeah, the, we reviewed this, we have an existing personal, personnel description of this qualification, of this duty. And in that duty, it did not list that they have to manage construction bidding and bidding support. And so because we added that provision to the personal, personnel job specification, that has to be approved to move forward. So Rich, did you have a question or comment?
I mean, I agree, well, at least I did agree. Now I'm a little confused with what the Vice Mayor said. I, I don't know how much time we want to, we've already spent quite a bit of time the last year on this subject, but I want to push this position more towards a leadership position, you know, with, with staff, and somebody who can move in that direction. So I, like you said, if we're just getting a firm, I'm, I'm okay on for it right now, but we do need to get this thing settled, that this person is not just the document stuff. It's like I said later, we, we need somebody who's able to work with staff to get the, you know, and move things along, and all these things that we've been talking about, because there's a lot of confusion about what's going on with, you know, even one of the council members, you know, what's going on with the, the general plan, for example? What is, what's going on with this? What's going on with that? And we keep saying with Brian, but a lot of that is going to be the city clerk helping to get things moving along, and working with, you know, there's sort of a disconnect between the council and the community and all that. So I'd like to see a little bit of a different, this sort of boilerplate thing we keep talking about. Well, this is what a city clerk was 10 or 15 years ago. I've talked to a couple of city clerks. I think this is outdated. We need to move it.
Okay. So let me just reiterate what I just said. We currently have a job description for this position. If we are changing the job description, we have to approve a revised job description. After our review of other cities' description of this position, we added in there having to deal with construction bids, project bid, whatever bidding that there needs to be. If we now want to add more to the job specification and the job description, then that's something else. But the city clerk is a statutory regulated position by the state But the city clerk is a statutory regulated position by the state through what their rules are, what they need to do. If we're going to expand that position to include social media, working with the general plan and other things, that is not within the normal city's job description for a city clerk. So, so there's two parts of this. Hang on, Liz. I see your hand. Hang on. So one is the revised job specification. Second is, do we go out to a request for qualifications to a recruiting firm? Once we do that and the recruiting firm is brought on board, then we can start looking at what they would put out as objective standards or more detailed in the job, than what we approved. So there's two parts to this. Okay, Liz.
So I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you, Madam Mayor. I would simply offer that we don't have to approve the job description when we send it out to the, to the request for calls, calls to the firm. We can say this is where our, our job description is. But in discussion with you, we would look forward to modernizing it and getting criteria, metric criteria.
Okay, city manager, would you like to comment on that if we have to, or a city attorney, if we have to approve the job spec before we go out to an RFQ?
You, you could approve the job spec at a later time, but if you're going to start a recruitment, all the information being provided on the recruitment will be the, the outdated job spec for the time being until it's revised.
But the job spec isn't necessarily related to the actual qualifications of the recruiting firm.
That's where I'm, I'm trying to be clear on our steps here. Isn't the first step to simply select a recruiting firm? And then one of the conversation points by someone was, we would discuss with them what our expectations were. And I would think they would then come back to us with what they thought was the best job description for what we need. That's what I thought I heard in the course of the conversation.
Is that.
Not that the job would go out with an outdated spec. The part of the task is to modernize the job description. Unless I misunderstood.
Brian?
Jill's going to jump on. Our human resource manager is going to jump in here and provide some input. Jill?
Hi, hi. Good evening, council. So just for clarification, typically the recruitment firms will ask human resources or the city for our current job specification. Their role is typically not to revise and wait for a job spec to be completed. They don't want to mess around with that. Just being frank here, that is not typically their role. Their role is to come in and do a recruitment. And they want all of those kinds of things, housekeeping types of things to be already conducted. So my recommendation would be that the council, which has already been done by the subcommittee, to take a look at other agencies' job specs for city clerk and revise ours appropriately, which we have done and we have provided to you at this time. I'm hearing comments from other council members now that you might be wanting to change the position entirely to take on other tasks or other roles that Susan just mentioned, or the mayor just mentioned, that may not be that of what a city clerk does. So maybe there needs to be additional conversation amongst council about whether or not you want the city clerk classification to be changed entirely. If that's the case, then I would suggest you have additional conversation and come back to human resources with a recommendation on a revised job specification. Otherwise, the existing job specification reflects what a city clerk does in a municipality. And I think we need to provide that if we're doing an RFQ for a recruiting firm. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Jill. So I appreciate what you just said. And we did look, I think we had six, seven, eight different cities' job specifications. And I just, this, this position keeps being expanded beyond what a city clerk is. The city clerk position is specified by the code. It's a statutory of what their duties are. And if you look at the list of what their duties are, just that in and itself is a full-time job. We do have the deputy city clerk position. We have other positions. So my caution, and Anne can chime in on this, is we are required to have a city clerk and they are required to have certain amount of responsibility. If we want to start piling on other responsibilities, I think we then need to say, well, is that really the city clerk? The deputy, or do we need another position? Rich?
Yeah, I mean, but that's, I'm okay doing it to Anne's position, but we're talking about, you know, and this is where I think a couple of us on one side, a couple on the other, and someone in the middle. I, it is then to me more, I don't, pick your word, it is not sort of a senior position. It's a position. It's a clerk position that, you know, you got to learn how to do the FPPC reports and you have to learn how to handle elections and do that. So we don't. That should be sort of a lower level as far as, you know, not trying to get them to work with staff and do a lot of these things that we consider more senior. And that's okay.
Well, I, I see what you're asking, Rich, as than either the deputy city clerk or someone else within the city manager's office. Again, there are very specific statutory requirements.
And I understand.
So I'm just, we went through other cities' job specifications. The one thing that glaringly came out was this lack of doing bidding support for jobs or for any bidding. So that was what we added. That has to be approved. So Anne, maybe if you'd like to add any more comment?
I'm supportive of moving forward with the, with the role the city clerk is defined in the, in the job description that we have with the amendment. I think that some of what council, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Waterman and Councilmember Resnikov are qualities that we could, we could look for in a candidate, such as leadership skills, such as management skills, such as ability to get along with others, such as ability to keep a project moving and, and over, project oversight. And I think that's reasonable to, to articulate when we get into a process with the recruiter and, and the candidate that we're looking for. So I think those are, it's a skillset or qualities. But the job description to me is, is what we should be approving. It's, it's a city clerk role. There are a lot of statutory duties and non-statutory duties, administrative duties. And they, they need to be completed by somebody, a qualified person.
Okay. All right. So Brian, do you have any more comments? Paul? No, Liz? Liz?
Should, should we reference the description and from the budget responsibilities? Should that be attached?
Anne?
I, I wouldn't recommend that. Now we're, we're approving a job description and, and asking for approval to move forward with an RFQ. I think we can talk about that. It would be more appropriate to talk about that during the process with the recruiter. And these are, these are the expectations that we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
And I think in there, we can be looking at the issue of diversity. I support diversity in every position that we have and every aspect of what we do. And so that could be language, if it's not already in there. I can't believe it's not. I mean, that to me is a high priority, is looking at diversity. So do we have a motion at this point? Anne, would you like to try?
Well, Liz, Vice Mayor had made a motion and nobody seconded. I'll be willing to second it. I, I think you recommended the staff recommendation.
Can you read the motion again, Liz?
So the resolution of the city council of the city of Campbell approving the revised job specification for the city clerk and authorizing issuance of a request for qualifications, I think, for executive search firm services.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
No.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
No.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. All right, let's see, we're at eight. Okay, so next is our public hearings and introductions of ordinances. Item number seven is ordinance to the city Campbell, chapter 6.12 to the city of Campbell in municipal code, amending the diversion rate of construction and demolition debris. And we have our deputy, I'm sorry, our public works director, Todd Capurso. That was not a demotion, by the way.
I was getting a little worried there.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to read. I, I, I don't have my glasses.
I appreciate the introduction. As the mayor mentioned, this is an update of ordinance, chapter 6.12 of, of the, the city of Campbell municipal code. It's worth noting that within our rather large municipal code, title six deals with health and sanitation. And specifically, chapter 6.12 deals with recycling and the salvaging of construction and demolition debris. And so that is really the section that we're focused on. Historically, within this section, we have called for a 50% diversion rate with, related to construction and demolition debris. And that was consistent with the California Green Building Standards Code for, for quite a while. However, this last January 1st, the diversion rate has gone up from, the required diversion rate to comply with that has gone up from 50% to 65%. So rather than change the number in our, in our ordinance from 50 to 65, what we're proposing is a change that doesn't specify a percentage. It calls for just compliance with the California Green Building Standards. So in the future, if and when that changes, we would be compliant and would not need to come back to council for an update. In effect, the, the, you have a strike through version of, of the ordinance. So there would be changes in six, in section 612, 030, 612, 040, and 612, 060. And I think that completes it. And essentially what that does, once again, is, is remove the reference to 50% and calls for compliance, calls for complying with the rate, with the diversion rate set by California's Green Building Standard Codes. And that's really about all there is to it.
Okay, I'm going to ask the first question. Is the provisions of the SB 1383, is that affected with this? Is that part of it? Because you only referenced the building code.
It, it does not. So 1383 is not, is not referenced in this. What, and I, and I should also point out that this only applies to, to, you know, there is a minimum standard of, of demolition. So this is really the demolition of 500 square feet or more of an, or an addition or the construction of a new structure where the, where the size of the new structure would exceed 2,000 square feet or valuation of $250,000. So it's rather specific.
So the things that are in the 1383 are not going to be affected by, or.
No, 1383, and hopefully, I, I don't, you know, I don't think we want to go too far down that path. But 1383 really has to do with the day-to-day disposal and diversion of, of organics. So.
Okay.
Time.
Thanks. Just, okay. Does anybody have questions for staff? I don't see anybody. All right. At this point, we'd like to open a public hearing. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any people wishing to speak on this item?
We do not.
Thank you. I will then close the public hearing and I can bring it back for either discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Okay.
No further discussion. That the city council approve an ordinance amending chapter 6.12 of the municipal code updating the required diversion rate of construction and demolition debris.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Deputy City Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Campbell, amending chapter 6.12 of the Campbell municipal code regarding recycling and salvaging of construction and demolition debris.
No further reading?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye, aye, aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
We didn't hear you, Paul.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye, thank you. All right. So now we're on to item eight. This is the authorization to proceed with the application to amend the general plan to create a new land use designation and to change the land use designation of the properties located. I don't know if I want to have to read all of them. But at this point, we're going to have our assistant planner, NOS, make a presentation. You can read more of the motion or the action.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Maybe a little louder.
A little louder, please.
Okay, how is this?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, great. Bear with me, please. I'm going to share my screen. All right. So item eight is an authorization to proceed with an application to amend the general plan. The project site consists of three properties located at the southwest corner of East Campbell and South Bascom Avenue and includes C2 general commercial zoning as well as R3 high-density residential zoning. The applicant's proposal is, the applicant's proposal is to redevelop the site with a 170-room hotel, a 211-unit apartment building, ground floor restaurant space, and a public plaza, second floor and rooftop private open space, and ground level and below-grade parking. The current general plan land use designations do not allow for the proposed configuration and density. Therefore, an amendment to the general plan land use map would be required. However, since the general plan does not include a designation with the, the applicant's proposed density range, a new general plan land use designation is also proposed, and this is called major corridor mixed use. This would allow commercial office and residential uses. I want to mention that the applicant's land use description, that was one of the attachments. It's a written description of the land use attachment two. So that indicates a density of 250 units per gross acre. Although, when you do the math and what's depicted on the plans, it comes out to 60 units per gross acre. Today, they applied it for me that there was a misunderstanding and they, they actually used a different method to calculate density than what the city uses. So as we define density, it is proposed at 60 and not 250 units per gross acre. And so the description and the plans are consistent. The staff reviewed the proposal in terms of consistency with the goals, policies, and strategies of the general plan, which does recognize that changes are warranted from time to time. That said, the proposed land use designation does not currently exist in our general plan. In addition, looking at the proposed density versus the current highest density, the proposed density is more than double at 60 units per gross acre. Therefore, it's difficult to find it consistent with existing land use patterns and community character as called for in the general plan. On the other hand, the project would locate a mixed-use housing development in higher-floor areas near services and light rail. And it would also increase revenue with new tax-generating businesses, which the general plan encourages. near services and light rail, and it would also increase revenue with new tax-generating businesses, which the general plan encourages. Therefore, these may be viewed as reasons to support the request, or at least some aspects of it, and allow formal application. Uh, staff received some questions on how state housing laws would apply if this proposal was allowed to move forward and was later approved. Uh, so where multifamily residential is allowed, uh, state density bonus, streamlining, and objective standard requirements would apply. So right now, this only applies to a small portion of the, the site that's already designated residential. But the proposal would extend the mixed-use residential use over the whole site. One of the questions for staff was if the land use was changed to allow and expand residential use using state housing laws, could we end up with a more intensive project? So I think the clarification that sixty units per gross acre is being proposed and not two fifty helps answer that question, but um, in addition, the applicant could pursue a density bonus of thirty-five percent over the allowable density, whatever that may be. In addition, there is no area plan or other standards that would guide the development or design. Therefore, uh, one option, if the city council is supportive of the request, is to create a new zoning district. And, um, this zoning district would provide objective standards or could provide objective standards by simply incorporating the project features in the conceptual plan such as building height, floor area, or percentage of, uh, residential to commercial uses. Uh, and a new zone district would be recommended over rezoning to the planned development zone. So with that said, ultimately, staff does recommend that the city council adopt a resolution denying the request for the reasons described. Thank you.
Okay, uh, is that the end of your presentation?
It is.
Can you put us back to the screen where we see everybody?
Yes, I will stop my sharing.
Thank you, I can't see everybody otherwise. Okay, so is there any questions, uh, from council regarding the staff presentation? Rich?
Yeah, so just to, yes, understand, I think we're just a sort of pre-approving something now, and then it'll go through the whole, i- if we were to approve it, it would go through the whole process of staff, planning commission, and
Yes.
All the other stuff, and then it would come back to this, or probably a future council, for any kind of preliminary or final approval, so we're not, we're not totally approving anything, we're just giving it a approval, and if that's, if you say yes, which is not what you did, what does that mean?
Okay, Richard, you're, I can't hear you, can you get a little closer to your mic?
I'm right here.
Aye, I'm right here, too.
So, so, right, i- if we're gonna do this thing, I know we've done it before, and we get it this sort of preliminary approval thing, um, and then it does go through all these others. Wh- what exactly are we really approving today? Because this isn't the final approval, right?
No, um, so per the Campbell municipal code, only the city council can initiate a general plan amendment. So, we have this as our process where an applicant can bring something forward to the city council for some initial feedback and, um, if the council feels like they could support the request, or wanna see it kind of fleshed out, then, yes, they would, um, you'd have to authorize them to proceed, and then they could come back with a formal application for a general plan amendment and, um, zone change, or either planning development permit or sign architectural review.
So if I could just dovetail on what Nas said, uh, Councilmember Waterman, so you're not approving anything. What you're really deciding is, you're deciding if there's enough merit with this concept to authorize future consideration of an amendment. Uh, you don't have to, they're, they're asking for a very big change. So you need to understand that this is something that has some value for future analysis, then you would authorize the submittal of a formal application. It's not committing you to any, uh, you know, end decision, you're not approving anything at this point. You're just in a position to either authorize or not, depending on your, your preference.
Okay, thank you, I'll stop there.
Uh, Liz, did you have your hand up, or Ann, I see you're Ann first?
So I, I have a question, if you could clarify, uh, and I'll refer to PAC at page seventy-two. There's a chart there that talks about, um, the units per, per gross acre that are, are allowed. And with this, it's my understanding that it, for this project, proposed project, that it would be sixty units per gross acre should a major corridor mixed use designation be allowed, is that?
That's correct, yes. They would be proposing sixty units per gross acre, which is two hundred and eleven units.
But there's also a potential that they, that classification could allow for up to two hundred and fifty units per gross acre on a, a different site. Is that correct?
That's the part that I was trying to clarify. So apparently, they calculated, um, how they look at density is different from how we as a city calculate density. So, um, they indicated to me that what is in the plans is what they would be proposing, so that two hundred and fifty, uh, units per gross acre in the written description should be sixty.
But, but they're also proposing a, a, a land use designation called major corridor mixed use. What, so that limits it to sixty units per acre?
Yes, that would need to change to sixty units per gross acre, and that's the new designation that they're proposing that would allow their proposed development.
Okay, thank you.
Would that also allow them the density bonus of thirty-five percent above the sixty?
That would be allowed above the sixty units, yes.
So you could end up with, what, what's thirty-five percent of sixty? You could end up with seventy or eighty, right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Paul, do you have any questions? You're on, okay.
At this point, thank you.
Uh, Liz, do you have questions?
Um, I'm assuming the applicant's gonna speak?
Uh, yes, the applicant is here.
Is going to make, um, uh, thing. So, um, I appreciate the presentation and the summary that you gave, Nas, that was very helpful. And the, uh, sixty units an acre is eligible for density bonus and so forth. So, um, okay, so I'll wait to hear from the applicant.
Okay, so at this point, I, we have up to five minutes for the applicant.
Hello, everybody, thank you for having us, and I'm glad to be here after all this delay and mayhem. Uh, it's very interesting to be having a city council meeting, uh, virtually, this is my first, so, uh, I apologize for, uh, not being a pro at this yet, but I think we're all trying to learn how to do it. Um, I guess I'll start with how we started. And we looked at this site as being a very important site for the city. Um, I live in Los Gatos, I work in downtown San Jose, and I go through Campbell. We go to work and from, I've been involved in Campbell in the past, when I was with a company called Prometheus. We, uh, entitled the current courtyard by Marriott and the current eight-by-eight, uh, office site that just finally got built. So my, I do have a history with Campbell. Know something about what it wants and needs and, and what its aspirations have always been. So when we looked at the site, we took it as an opportunity to understand a very important site for the long-term goals and objectives of, of, of Campbell to have a grand thoroughfare from Bascom into downtown through the portals, and to have, uh, some sort of understanding about what Campbell is. So when we were asked by our client who owns the land, the, the family's owned, the Barbona family's owned land for quite a long time, goes back to, uh, being a drying field for apricots. Uh, they wanted to look at this as a long-term owner and as a, a local resident, and what they could do with this site to facilitate the goals of Yes. And so to do that, we did a lot of analysis, we did, we, we really, I have a note here, you'll look at, but we looked at the general plan and zoning, we, we met with the staff to understand what is and is not possible under current views. We met with our neighbors, we hired consultants, uh, we really reached out to get as much data as we could. And in do, in that process, we found out some things that are, you know, some of which are very obvious. Uh, number one, traffic is the most important issue. Two, commercial key, commercial use is a key aspect of the site. Open space is very important. Parking lots are not a good thing. Uh, height limit is sacrosanct. Traffic is the most important thing. Campbell housing, uh, uh, supply is restricted and is under utilized, is at, at below spec for state, current state standards and coming state standards. Traffic is a very important issue. Medical office has been considered and did not work. Technology office can work, but is not optimal. Uh, hotel, believe it or not, our surprise, hotel, uh, the, the site for hotel became one of the best sites that our consultants have ever seen for a suburban hotel site. And housing demand is very strong. So we took all this, all this information in, and we, uh, synthesized it to maybe come up, uh, with a process or a project that would accentuate the positive, eliminate the negative, and come up with a win-win, value-oriented solution. And so what we did, we did exactly that. We eliminated the high-traffic uses for medical and technology office. We eliminated, uh, uses that require broad, open parking lots like big, big-box retail. We incorporated public transportation. We, uh, selected the lowest traffic, uh, and parking demand generators we could with, uh, hotel, housing, and pedestrian-oriented retail. We maximized the open space, and we embraced, as I mentioned before, the portals. We, we shamelessly stole the water tower as the image of the city just to inculcate the idea of whimsy and, and creativity that the site might imbue. Um, and we just wanted to set the table for a conversation with the community. So, effectuating all of these elements of a project, uh, what, in the, with the open space and with the parking demands, all of these things, uh, together, basically drove us to a two hundred and eleven, two hundred and twenty-five-unit apartment complex and a hundred and seventy-room hotel. There are a lot of technical issues with regard to the size of the hotel for its operational protocols. Um, you basically, you max out at about a hundred and seventy before you need to go to two fifty. So that's kind of at the upper limit of what we're trying to achieve and what this, the market metrics give us at this point.
Okay, um, hang on a second, you are past your five minutes, can you please wrap it up? You have three minutes later to talk.
That, that's fine, I, I appreciate it. Uh, I'm just trying to get a lot in in a very short period of time. We, we basically designed this project to start a conversation with the community for a win-win solution. And, uh, with that, I'll stop.
Thank you. All right, um, so, uh, deputy city clerk, do we have any people wanting to speak as a public comment?
Sorry, madam mayor, may we ask the applicant questions, please?
Oh, okay. Let me just do a check-in. City clerk, do we have anybody wishing to speak?
We do.
How many people do we have?
Two people.
Two?
Two.
Okay, so, uh, what, let, uh, ask questions to the applicant, and then we'll go to public, uh, comments.
I don't know if others have any questions. Um, so, um, hello, over there? Um, so, uh, I want, I did a little research, um, on your firm, and, um, I know you've got quite a bit of projects, um, um, in downtown San Jose. I also, uh, looked at your mission statement for your company, and it talked about, "Our goal is to generate exceptional risk-adjusted returns for our partners." And it goes on to say, "We use disciplined approaches in identifying unique opportunities and executing strategic business plans to capitalize on these opportunities," and goes on beyond that. So, I was curious, um, you are basically, um, development firm, it seemed to me like you were doing a lot of entitlements. So do you entitle projects, do you build projects, do you hold projects? The product I saw on your webpage looked to me like, or, um, you, you do entitlements, as you said, and then you basically, they change hands.
Correct. Well, well, for our own account, uh, our web, our webpage focuses on what we do for our own account. What we don't emphasize on the webpage is when we do our consulting work for landowners, and we help them understand how to, uh, develop value for their own accounts. So we do consulting as well, uh, and that's what we're doing in this regard. Uh, you know, development, real estate development is a, is a risky business, and you have to justify that risk with, uh, economic returns, and that's what we do. We're in the business of, uh, informing our own investors and our clients about what the risks are on one hand, and the rewards are on the other, and trying to balance those for their own tolerance. And obviously, within the, within the, uh, cities that we operate in, those calculations vary.
So if I may, uh, just to clarify, so this particular project, at least at this point, is not a you're developing yourself for your own inventory, it's a project that you are consulting on?
We are consulting with the owners of the land, and we are trying, the owners are longtime landowners, I mentioned, and they want to do a high-quality, long-term hold investment on the land.
Okay, um, and, um, so this involves quite a bit of, of, uh, potential general plan change, and, um, staff, I can ask these questions a little bit later, but there would be a process involved, staff just outlined the basics. Um, uh, would you, would you be paying the city to develop the general plan, uh, documentation and the zoning plan documentation to accommodate your proposed new zoning?
Well, I, I guess, I mean, I'm not, I've never been asked that question before, but, but, uh, I know you're in the middle of a general plan, uh, process. We certainly believe that this project is worthy of being considered as part of that process. We think that it should be used as maybe a test case for that process. So I'm not sure, you know, what you're saying versus what you're already going through. But we're certainly willing to, uh, you know, have a public process to view this site, and hopefully what we learn on this site can be applied elsewhere. We're, we're, this is an open community project in our view.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, unless there's any other questions, we'll hear our public input.
Okay, first, let's start with, uh, Audrey P. Chiber.
Yes, hi, Audrey.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, hi, Audrey.
Okay, hi there, everyone, so thank you very much, councilmembers and mayor, for, um, hearing us. We had the pleasure of, um, meeting, um, with, um, Acuity Realty, um, uh, and with Dennis, a, a few days ago, uh, Jack, the board members did. And we reviewed this project, our comments regarding that are, have been submitted to you in a letter. Um, I think really my goal tonight is to really emphasize that, um, eh, this project scaled down appropriately could be built under existing zoning, um, that we have here in the city of Campbell. They would have to apply to change, um, the, you know, some of their land designations to, right, to an existing, um, designation that we have already, without requiring us to make a combination to change our entire general plan. Um, and they could build an, an apartment complex and the hotel. Um, we had a lot of comments, um, you know, we would love to have them work with the community and feedback, should they choose to go forward, but as, as currently described, the idea that we need to change our general plan to accommodate a developer's vision of what the city of Campbell should be doing, um, is not one that we support at all. Um, if If that kind of vision of Campbell is what we need going forward, then it should be through the process of the G-PAC. And I think a lot of people in Campbell would be disappointed to find out that we're, we're going to allow Campbell to more closely resemble someplace such as Sunnyvale with its large density and types of developments. So basically, I can't see the time right now, much of time I have, but I just wanted to say that overall, a project of this type, if it was scaled down appropriately and could be done to meet our, our current standards, would, would be great. I mean, it has a lot of great qualities. We said that in our letter. And, but we really urge you not to make special accommodations for a project and change the character of our city of Campbell just for one project. I think the developers can change their projects and make them more suitable for the city of Campbell. And I think it can profit all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The, the next speaker was actually Dennis Rangel. I see that he's on this meeting.
Yeah, I think there was a confusion on which link I had to click, so I apologize for that.
So that is it.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
Could I comment on the, what Audrey just mentioned?
We, we're gonna have a conversation and you have three minutes.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you want to hear us all first and then have your three minutes or?
No, I'll, I'll wait for sure.
Okay, we're, we're a little bit flexible here. Okay, uh, do you want, Rich, do you have any comments?
I mean, typically, the person representing the project would get the three minutes now, which would be helpful discussing, right? You're asking for question, are you asking for questions or comments now?
Comments.
Well, if you, if he, if he wants to have his three minutes now, that's fine.
Well, that's typically, that's typically how we do it.
Okay, I'm, I'm out of order a little then. Dennis, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll follow whatever rules are being applied. I'm all, all for that. I, I, I really appreciate Audrey's feedback. She was very thoughtful and gave us time to give us the ability to review our proposal. I would only counter back saying that to accomplish what we believe what the city goals are, to have open space, to have parking being below grade or not seen, it requires a certain compromises on design and density and certain elements of the site to accomplish these things. You know, we're dealing, we're basically dealing with physics. So we have to either, parking is either above ground or below ground or we do a different configuration. Or we have shorter buildings and no public space. Or we have tall, slightly taller buildings and more public space. And, and we have two different uses. There are requirements for hotel and residential that have some conflicting issues. So these are, it's a very complicated mix of what we're trying to achieve. I fully appreciate her view. It's an open process that we're looking for and the answer is somewhere in between our view and maybe hers. But I think that we have a lot of people who like what we're doing. We have some people who don't. We're just wanting to have the opportunity to vet all those things out so we can make a good decision at the end. I'll just end it there.
You got a minute left?
I'll just make a mistake. I'm sure I'll just do something wrong. I'm just gonna stop if I have that.
Okay, you had your chance. Okay, now we go to Rich.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the idea. That's why I asked at the beginning. We, we should move forward on it. We're gonna have a lot of projects like this in the next, whatever, year or two, because there's, there's a lot of land changes that are gonna be happening. I mean, unfortunately or fortunately, it looks like it'll be a while before we finish up our friend, the general plan. And even if we do, we're still gonna be discussing changes. This is kind of the way things are. And it, it's always been since I've been on the council. So I think it's worth, you know, let's give it a chance to work itself out as, as the developer said. Almost for sure be somewhere in the middle of what they want and what the city's proposing now. I know the people that live in my neighborhood in Trune, gotten two emails, one from Vicky Esser, who's the head of the neighborhood association. She was certainly in favor of it. Most of my neighbors I've talked to are in favor of it. Whether it's gonna be that big or not in the end, obviously, there's gonna have to be, again, some detail and process. But I am, I'm very excited, excited about letting this go forward and we'll, we'll iron out the details that we, as we have on other projects as we go. We're, we're gonna have to do that with, with the world moving fast and with the general plan not out yet, whenever that'll be out. And the new general plan will need some changes too, that, that always happens. So, so I'm enthusiastically supporting this. Thank you.
Okay, Anne? Do you want to make any comments, Anne?
Sure. So I, I see this as an opportunity site for the city and I think it's important that the placement and the scale of this project is, is like, is important to the city image and it should identify with the city image. It should expand upon and, and complement the small-town feel and, and the, the scale and the character should complement the community. We're in the process of updating and, and I, I support a higher density than, than what the current, current general plan allows. So I'll state that. But we're in the process of updating the general plan and I don't think that it's in the best interest of the city to, to consider a new defined land use in response to, to a single development application. I, I, I appreciate and respect the work that the G-PAC has done and is continuing, continues to do. And I know that they have a vision for the city and that they're gonna have recommendations for opportunity sites where the, where the density should be increased. And I think we should be waiting for the G-PAC and the city to be making a decision about the general plan update and, and how, how it's gonna be amended and not allow one development site to dictate the general plan designation.
Thank you.
And, and I, I must say that they, that I like a lot of the features of the project. I mean, they, they did a really nice job in, in, in presenting and, and the layout.
Okay, I always want to wait a little, make sure I stop interrupting people. Paul, do you have some comments?
Yes, please. Yeah, I like.
Speak into your mic a little more.
I like, is that better?
Yep, thank you.
Sure. I, I like the general idea. I mean, I don't think, as been said, we're at a final project here. I think Councilmember Bobby just said it is an opportunity for the city. I think it's worth looking at. Even Director Kermoyen, I think, called it an opportunity to open a discussion up and we've heard that a couple of times. I don't think, I, I don't think there's a major risk to taking that. The initial feedback that I've seen from, from the people specifically in that neighborhood, specifically people who oppose things like drive, drive-ups and all that, liked this project and they've met with the applicant and have, have had positive feedback. We can't forward without much more of that feedback from the neighbors. So I'd like to do that and have that opportunity to present it. Even the, the feedback from the neighbors, we're still gonna go through the normal planning commission council, all, all those kinds of discussions. I think it's true just to say we're not interested in it. I don't think a finished product will look exactly like this or be this intense. What does intrigue me too is, you know, every time I see a project like this and we think it's just too big, I go back to Valco. And then the old rules at Valco, 300 and 400 units is too big. The new rule is 2,400 and 3,000 is too big. I like to have these discussions where we have an opportunity to control what goes into Campbell and it's our decision. And if we want to do it, we move forward and do it. And then we don't worry about what's gonna come down the path from various senators and then tell us what to do in the city that may be well beyond what, what our comfort level is. So I would like to go forward and allow the application, which I know, I mean, it happens, but I think I'm allowed to go forward and quickly and work on it that way. So I'm in favor of it.
Liz?
Thank you. Interesting comments. I'm gonna come back to Councilmember Resnickoff's use of the term risk. And Councilmember Bobby, I'm in concurrence with you that there's a lot of things about, and I guess Councilmember Resnickoff as well, there's a lot of things that are kind of fun and interesting about the project. I don't have any prop, opening up our eyes and opportunities for a change, new look. So I'm, I'm open to that. The risks for me are actually that state law will in fact override us. No matter what we say, state law will override us. So basically, there's no context to the drawings. The building is 75 feet high plus the water tower element. And if you put it in the context of the prun yard, we just approved a 50-foot-high building, not a 75. So this is a very, very, very big project. Lots of nice components to it, but very, very big. And my concern is that it's spot zoning. The city, you know, there's a huge amount of effort to go into coming up with a new land use on the general plan, a huge amount of effort to come up with the zoning change. And I'm curious, you know, who's actually gonna pay for that effort? And probably my, my biggest concern is why I wanted to understand the developer. The risk for the city is that this project would go forward with entitlements and then it would be sold off and someone else would come in and build a totally different project. There's no way really for the city.
That's not the objective.
From that. So I think that we really have to be careful about setting a precedent for, we know we have three or four or five or six different parcels coming up in the city. General plan is talking about that. We may want to go to the root of specific plans. So there's a tremendous risk, I think, to the city about what would happen with this entitlement zoning process, master, general plan process change. So that's where I'm not comfortable going forward. And I will say in the back of my mind, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but we have had recent incidents of where council allowed zoning changes, not even general plan changes, zoning changes, and the developer promised not to do something and they went ahead and did it. And it went through the planning process and never got to council. So council was never able to respond, but you committed to not doing this. So I'm wary of totally out of the process and doing something to the sole benefit of one parcel with something that could be totally changed once entitlement's established.
Thank you.
I respect, yeah.
Wait, I'm sorry. That's why I asked you if you wanted to be at the end.
If I would have known. I want my minute back. I want my minute back. Okay.
Okay, come on, let's keep moving. So I appreciate everybody's comments. I would agree with Councilmember Bobby in that I support a high-density project at this location. I support having housing, hotel, commercial. The problem though is what they're asking is well beyond what they could have had. And as the STACK committee commented, is a scaled-down version could work within the existing zoning with some minor changes. But what this project is asking for is to create a whole brand-new category called mixed, or major corridor mixed use. I can think of at least four other parcels in the city that want to have a similar designation. But what I don't know is do they want 60 units per acre? Do they want 70 units per acre? Do they want 50 units per acre? And so to me, this is the bigger conversation that the city needs to have. We're in the middle, or actually, we're getting to the end of our general plan amendment. We're getting into the point of starting an environmental review. If we add this category at this point, how does that affect where we are within the general plan? Because certainly this category would affect the environmental review of the whole total general plan. So I don't think we should be making a, one specific project create the category. I think as the G-PAC, we have a lot of faith. We have a lot of respect. They have spent years working on this. They have had some preliminary conversations of this category, but they have not brought a recommendation to the city council of what this whole major corridor mixed use includes. I am open to new ideas. You guys all know that. I'm willing to think outside the box, but then it needs to be globally to the entire city. And we need to consider other larger parcels. And I, as from what I understand, two of them have come to the G-PAC with letters asking for this discussion. So I don't want to have us say, yes, you move forward and you now dictate how this is going to move. I'd rather have the larger dialogue with the G-PAC, the other building, property owners and developers that have the other sites. This is an opportunity site. I have to agree with what Councilmember Vice Mayor Gibbons said. It is a very complicated project and that's even more reason why we need to step back for a minute and say, okay, but what if we let 50 of these in the city? What happens? What if we let two? What if we only let this one? And so I want to see this as the bigger conversation and I want to see the G-PAC involvement. I want to see the planning commission involvement and I want to hear from the other developer. Do we want 50? Do we want 60? Do we want 70? Plus, then you get density bonuses. So to me, it's a big mix of everything and I support the denying of the project at this point. I'm not saying I'm denying the concept of a larger development. I, I want to make that clear. This is about the process, where we are in the general plan right now, what the impact to the general plan will be, what the impact to the environmental analysis is gonna be and how this is gonna be reflective all over the entire city. So that's said. Unless there's more discussion, I'll take a motion. Paul?
So just some, I'm not gonna change everybody's vote, but just a couple of quick comments about what, what I've heard. So I know we're, we're about what the G-PAC might want. It's just interesting that the person that Councilmember Waterman mentioned from his neighborhood association is on the G-PAC. So there's a G, there's somebody on the G-PAC that's actively sort of reporting the project. I don't think we should be trying to see what we believe they believe. Just, just one other thing. Some of the things brought up, the height with the water tower, the cost of doing this, the, the could, project could be sold, which any project could. Don't get discussed in this process. I know, like I said, I'm not gonna change everybody's vote, but we're not looking at a final design. So if, if, for example, the only thing that bothered somebody was the height of the water tower, that water tower could go away and the design could be done, then it would be. I, I guess I'm just surprised that we're looking at a concept here and saying, well, that's, that's not the right one. This was just to open up a conversation. Last thing is, I'm not aware of what project was changed, the zone text, by the commission later that we never heard about. If that's the case, there may be a process that needs to change there for the city. If that's the case, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Director Kermoyen later another time. I'd like to find out what that is. But just a comment there, I, we should, if that, if that's an issue, we should fix the issue. But that's a separate issue.
So, thank you, but, thank you, Paul. So I see this as, there's actually two things here that are moving forward. One is this whole brand-new major corridor mixed use policy or, or category in the general plan. That's one. You know, you've heard my reasoning of why not for this project. The second is this individual project. So if we already had this category and this project came forward, then we would be talking about the water tower, the height, the open space, the underground parking. But we gotta deal with this category first. And that, I'm not saying I don't like the project. I'm saying that we need to think of it more globally. We don't want to do spot zoning. We don't want to make a special accommodation for this one project without thinking of it as a whole. So that's where I'm coming from. So that's where I'm coming from.
I'm actually, if I may, I'm in agreement with you on the second.
Can I make a motion?
I don't think it's about, it's about the height and stuff like that. I agree.
No, it's not about the height. It's this, we're, he wants to create a new category called major corridor mixed use.
I was asked, I was asked to create a category that would allow for...
Sorry, Dennis. Sorry, Dennis. Okay, Liz?
So just to make sure that Councilmember Resnikov didn't misunderstand my comments. My comment was the context of the location. The city has the 75-foot height. We just did a 50-foot height limit on the parcel across the street. This project would be 75 feet plus their water tower element. I wasn't objecting to the water tower element at all, I'm just making a note. Liz, you froze up. Context. And if you develop the zone, if you develop this, you've been freezing up all night. It's been tough. If you have the context, the zoning, the general plan, and the zoning documentation and everything, puts together a picture of what's right for this site. And that's what I'm saying. We don't have the right tools to do a spot zoning. I agree with very much what the mayor's saying. I'm just putting it in a little different context, but that's why I can't support that at this point, going this route.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion. I would make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution denying the requested authorization to proceed with an application to amend the general plan and directing the applicant to propose a project consistent with the general plan.
Do we have a second? Anne or anybody have a second?
I think Anne's frozen.
I'm frozen.
There, I heard you, Anne, was that a second?
Did you, yeah, I'll second. I'm frozen, but I, can you hear me? I will second.
We hear you, your face is frozen, but your voice isn't. Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
No.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
No.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. That motion passes, thank you. And I would say that this is something that's going to be an ongoing conversation, and as we move forward, discussing this type of intensity and use with the general plan. Okay, so we have our second-to-last item under new business. This is item nine, a resolution amending the agreement with the city manager services. And at this point, we have our human resource manager, Jill Lopez, presenting. Hi, Jill.
Hi, hi. I hope everyone's doing well. Good evening, mayor and city council. So thank you for allowing me to present this evening. So I'm going to start out with the, per the terms of the employment agreement with the city manager, Brian Leventhal, the city council is authorized to make amendments to the compensation of the city manager. The report that you have here discusses the compensation changes to the employment agreement that were decided by the city council in closed session. These changes will be effective June 29, 2020, which include retroactive pay and a salary increase that bring the current city manager's salary to market rate. This position has not received a cost of living adjustment or other salary adjustments since 2016. While the city, while the salary for the city manager has remained at the 2016 level, city department heads have continued to receive cost of living adjustments and in some cases, merit increases when appropriate. This has resulted in compensation compaction issues between the department heads and the city manager. Per the City Campbell Personnel Rules and Regulations for Management, it states that department head should be in a salary range which is a minimum of 10% above the top step of the range of the highest salaried assistant or division head. This is in Rules and Rigs, section 4, 3C1. The proposed increase to the agreement will bring the city manager's salary into compliance with the rules and regulations. These changes are included in the amended contract agreement for city manager services attached in this report. Thank you, and this concludes my summary, and I am available for questions.
Does any council member have questions for Jill? Where'd Paul go? There you are.
Paul's having video issues. He's back now.
I'm back now. I got you.
Questions? No, no. Liz?
I guess it's a question. I think that we need to have an additional whereas in the amended agreement. I think the agreement needs to state that whereas there was a, what Jill just said, is a compaction issue resulting from the salary and lack of adjustments to the current date. I think we need something that describes why we're doing this. It's not in there anywhere.
Is that Bill? Brian? What, or Bill, Brian, that's not to you, Bill. What would we add as the language?
I think what the vice mayor described is fine, or you could quote the language from the relevant section of the personnel rules and regs.
I would say, say whereas, and then quote the section out of the regs.
But I think we need to stipulate that there was a problem starting in 2016 to the current time. So whereas, there is a, there is an...
He just froze up.
...issue based on regulation, blah, blah, blah. That has... All right, can you hear me now? Anybody hear me now?
You're cutting in and out a little bit.
Well, yeah, everybody's, it's just, I think...
I got it very hard.
Yeah. So...
That's not a problem. We can make that happen.
Yeah, just adding some language. That, I mean, I think, I think it's beneficial to everyone to understand what happened, and it's in the agreement, so it's clearly stated.
No problem.
Okay, I didn't ask Rich, do you have any questions or comments? Anne?
No comments.
Okay. I would just say that, you know, we're where we are. We need the compaction to be where it is per the code. I think the city manager has been flexible and allowing it to be over an installment over the several months and the year instead of making it all be a cash out right now. So I think that's nice that he's been accommodating and understanding our budget situation right now. Andrea, is there anybody wishing to speak on this item?
There is not.
Okay, then I'll bring it back to council for a motion. Liz?
Can you hear me? I would make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution amending the agreement for the city manager service with the additional whereas regarding resolution of the compaction issue.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Waterman?
Aye.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Resnikov?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye. Thank you, guys. So at this point, we're down to council committee reports. Do we want to, everybody go through and talk about their committee reports? We haven't done this for a while. Rich, you're first. You're on mute.
So the only thing, a while back, at a Savannah meeting, budget, it was actually, Campbell, we were the ones kind of pushing a little, but everybody else agreed we're, they're going to reduce our fees by 5% this coming fiscal year, which is not a huge number, but it's...
Great. That's it?
That is it.
No bird bomb this time, Rich. Anne?
I just attended a virtual meeting, the ABAG General Assembly meeting on behalf of Vice Mayor Gibbons last week. That's it.
Anything exciting coming out of it?
They're recommending a dues increase, and there was some, quite a bit of discussion among the cities who didn't really want to support a dues increase, but in the end, it did get heard.
Okay, Paul?
Just a couple of virtual meetings, West Valley Sanitation District and the Cities Association, just those two meetings.
And can you briefly mention what happened at the city associating meeting?
So the biggest topic in the city association was, I'd say, a roundtable of, talk about social issues and how do we, and how do cities respond? Two things, actually. What are cities doing, but also what have cities been experiencing as far as protests in their cities and how they've been operating and the involvement of the police or lack of involvement of the police and things like that? So it was kind of an eye-opener. Every city's very different from cities. Like Mopitas, I think, that had nothing really, and cities like, say, Mountain View that had, or Sunnyvale, that had much bigger impact of protests or calls into their meetings that, like I say, from that, we had a resolution that was passed that Chappy Jones drafted up, I believe it was, about equitable treatment of things in Black Lives Matter, not the organization, but the, but the concept. That was a discussion we had, that I referenced earlier from Mayor Constantine, of encouraging cities to take that step forward and do the symbolic, but actually do the real steps forward and make some progress.
Great. Liz?
Okay, you're all frozen, but can you hear me?
I can hear you and see your lips moving.
Okay, we'll see what happens. So my favorite wonderful, Silicon Valley Clean Energy has just completed $1 billion worth of long-term energy support providing for 100% carbon-free and 100% renewable energy. For us, I'm all still less than PG&E, very excited about that. Everyone who was on the FARA program and the CARE program should have received notice their $250 credits on their energy bills, and all small businesses should have received a letter identifying their $250 credit for their electric bill. And then here, a, I don't know, it's Pride Month, and normally we do a declaration for Pride Month, and we...
You're lost now.
Light up the water tower. So I'm assuming that's still going to happen later this month? Okay, am I frozen again? I said Pride, Pride Month and lighting up the water tower this month. I also wanted to mention that the Ainsley House Foundation has offered to fund some of the repairs and things of the, in the budget, as they typically do. And they were being very generous at what they were willing to support, and staff might want to follow up on that. Then the Cities Association, I made a presentation on the update on the infamous 2050 plan, which we saw evidence of tonight on the... Equal mile travel discussion, very similar. Ballot measure on November for a $35, 100 evaluation for housing, that failed. Fortunately, for, at this time and place, the polling numbers didn't come through. But there is a discussion going on about establishing BAFA, which is the Bay Area Housing Financial Authority. And it's very controversial as to whether a new bureaucracy needs to be set up if there's no money being generated from taxes. I have one request at the end of the meeting, please.
Okay. So yesterday, I was on a virtual meeting regarding VTA's Highway 85. Todd Capurso was also a part of the meeting. They are discussing different options of potentially adding a lane down the Highway 85, one lane on each side. There was multiple options given, add a lane, don't add a lane, make a transit lane, make an express lane, keep the HOV. No firm resolution. There was consensus to some extent on a 3.2 option, which would look at adding a transit lane down the middle. I also participated in Anna Schuss's weekly Teletown meeting. She discussed the potential for the HEROES Act, the police legislation that they then ended up passing, and then also regarding the COVID testing. I'm involved with Cindy Chavez and all 15 mayors in the Santa Clara County. Every Saturday, we have calls with Cindy, and the main focus is on the testing capabilities of the county. The 15 mayors have been pushing to get all these extra testing sites. They have two mobile vans now that are going around. The tests are free. You don't, some of them, you don't even have to have a doctor's recommendation. You don't have to be sick to get tested. And they're also recruiting hundreds of people that look at contact tracing, and that this is one of the best ways to understand how this is being spread. Paul Kamoyan and myself participated in this group through the Silicon Valley Leadership Group called the Mayor Circle, and it encompasses more than just our county. It goes up through San Mateo County and some Alameda County. And the goal of the Mayor Circle is a recovery roundtable that will respond, regroup, rebuild, and reimagine our region. And it's going to be working over the next couple months of coming up with some cohesive planning. Paul and I were in the subgroup about how to deal with minority groups and those less fortunate, and what we could be doing to help them move along. One person suggested it even comes down to helping people fill out forms. We also talked about what can we do consistently throughout all the different cities and counties. I also will put a plug in for the Campbell Chamber of Commerce. I hope you've all been seeing the yellow bows that are, I mean, the orange...
Orange.
Orange, I'm sorry, orange. Ken will kill me. I tied 200 bows on a weekend, watched the Law &amp; Order marathon, and tied over 200 bowls, went out with several of the staff members of the chambers. Other people throughout the city have been buying bows. I think we have all of Campbell Avenue now, the pruneyard, Double Way City Hall. So that is a support for recovery. It's a visual sign of support, showing that we are reopening Campbell and that we are really promoting our recovery. It also goes through the Campbell Cares Program. I think that's it. And what was your last request?
So very much in line with Councilmember Resnikov's comment about the Cities Association. I was, council members in action, mayor, vice mayor and mayor spoke as the only black-elected officials in Santa Clara County. They wrote an op-ed piece in the Merck. And I'm not sure I can do justice, in a meeting format like this, on Zoom, when Mayor Constantine spoke, I could feel the vibrations of his emotions. It was such an extraordinary experience, hearing, being there in that room with, listening to Council Vice Mayor Chappy Jones and Vice Mayor Figora from Los Altos and Mayor Constantine from Morgan Hill.
You froze again.
And his comment was very simple. He said, all right, his comment was very simple. He said, "Don't do nothing this time. You must act. We all must act." So my comment is that I would like, I'm very pleased that the chief is putting together something about reaching out to the community. I would very much like it to be something formal with the full support of the council to really, the PD at this point in time needs our backing, but we also need to... ensure that the conversation with the community knows that the council's listening as well. And there's so much changing. So I'm hoping that the council would be supportive of as soon as.
You keep losing.
Chief was comfortable organizing. Some kind of community forum as soon as we can.
I, I appreciate it and it was very moving hearing them speak. Um, I will state that, um, there was a lot of emails, uh, between Black Lives Matter and Eight Can't Wait. Uh, the chief did provide a very nice letter as a preface to the, his response to the eight can't wait, which I thought was very well prepared. Um, there also is the Obama pledge, which basically what we talked about tonight about having community input, reviewing what we're doing. Um, I think the chief has expressed his bill, his desire to ask for community input. And so I did sign the Obama pledge. So unless there's anything else for the good of the order. Don't see anybody. I get to ham, my little hammer here. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.